Good evening, welcome to the March 28th Planning Board Meeting for town of Foxborough. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. There may, there is a possibility that some, some people may or may not zoom in this evening. So you should be aware of that. For any of you who have a need or desire to speak, please remember that you need to approach the podium and speak through a microphone so that it's recorded and to state your name and address for the record. Thanks very much. Anything under new or old business?
We, we have signed a contract, the town has signed a contract for converting our application process to online permitting. We're in the very baby steps of this, but planning, conservation, and the zoning board of appeals applications will all be required to file with online permitting. We're excited and nervous, but it's something that has been, you know, we've been talking about this for a couple of years. So we have, we have a grant and we plan to, to use it for that purpose. Other than that, we are getting more applications, so we have two, one small subdivision expecting to file in the next couple of months and other little projects, so we're, we're getting busy. You're getting busy.
The town's getting busy, that's good. Anything, anything under active subdivisions or?
Not at this time.
Okay. We have some minutes to approve, March 14th, 2024.
My apologies, I didn't get the minutes done. I was out today, I had to go to a funeral, so they were just close to being done.
Okay, and about the Garrett Spillane Road Form A, is that?
Yes. Everybody has plans in their pockets. It's pretty straightforward. The, the residents at 15 Garrett Spillane Road have a really large lot and their neighbors at 11 do not. So they're actually selling them a piece of their land so that they can have a bigger yard. And both of the lots have sufficient area.
Okay, so, so 047A is going to give it the parcel to, to the resident on the left, 046?
Parcel A.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right, okay.
Make the motion approve before May is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then 7 Perry Drive, 35 Pannas Road, sign plans?
We did that last night?
What's that?
Are we doing?
No, this is, this is Form A.
Sorry?
So this is Form A also for Perry Drive. This is the, the land that was subject to the approval of the planning board when they did the expansion of Southern Perry Drive. It was using the parcel that we're signing off today.
Oh, I see, okay.
So there, a large parcel is being cut, a small piece, and given to another parcel that has a small piece.
Right.
So that they can expand their business. The planning board already voted to approve that.
Do you need us to sign both of these?
Yes. I put them on the table so that we can sign them at the end of the meeting.
Unless you want us to do it now, because we can't do anything till 7:10 anyway.
Do they need a motion?
Yeah, can we have a motion to approve the Form A?
Sure.
I'll make the motion approve the Form A for 7 Perry Drive is presented.
Second.
Wow. There you go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's not required, so the top one. Bad?
Dead.
And this is, this is bad. I think we have to order now. Somebody left them open at one point. Yep.
Sorry, can I steal them in?
Thank you.
I brought money, it's been a long meeting. How you liking it? Is that one you watch out of week?
Yep. You literally, within like a couple hours, you have no appetite. And of course, I haven't told my parents, so every time I come over, I hide it in my fridge. What are you doing?
Can't turn that clock.
Here.
Thanks.
You okay?
Yeah. Then you won't be able to drink it.
I haven't seen them lately though. Which one is this? Here's one, which one is that one?
I don't know.
Mr. Corey, would you like to start setting up ready? I forget that I put in your packets a brochure that was.
I saw that.
Yeah, so apparently it was someone that made a comment in our meeting, not knowing the difference between the Historical Commission, the Historical Society, and the Historic District. So the Historical Society wanted to share the information with you and enlighten the board.
They did. Want to be on the right side of the historical people. It being honored about 7:10 PM, we have a continued public hearing, special permit site plan for 30-32 Wall Street, a proposed remodel and expansion of an office commercial mixed-use project, TNC Development LLC, True North Construction Incorporated. Mr. Corey, how are you?
Hi, how are you, Mr. Chair? Mike Corey of Madoff &amp; Corey in Foxborough for the applicants. Mr. Chair, this, the property involved is 30-32 Wall Street, map 79, parcel 31. It's a 7,300 square foot parcel on which is built, was built in 1930, a two-story building consisting of a first-floor commercial unit of about 1,000 square feet and a second-floor residential unit of 1,000 square feet. That second-floor unit has two bedrooms. The property is within the General Business District and the Foxborough Center Overlay We originally submitted a, an application for special permits and site plan review in September, and we were heard before this board on October 26th. There were a number of comments from the board as well as butters concerning parking, vehicle access to Wall Street and Coac acid Street because the property is right on the corner. And we kind of went back to the drawing board and revised it. The, the project has been scaled back. It was originally, the total square footage of the buildings originally were proposed at 3,600 square feet. It's been scaled back to 3,240 square feet. And what, the, the project consists of three residential units, again, down from four residential units as originally proposed, with a, with two units of 1,800 square feet and 2,000 square feet on either side of the existing building. What we'd like to do is keep the existing building with the residential and commercial unit maintaining the same size and just be renovations on the inside. We've proposed in this revised plan that was filed earlier this month, five parking spaces with, with turnaround areas provided within the property so that there isn't, no one has to back out onto Wall Street or Coac acid Street. We also would close down the curb cut that would be right on the corner, given the safety concerns that, that this board as well as police and fire expressed. The property would have 1,800 square feet of landscape space, ample snow storage, and there'd be installed a new stormwater management system. There is nothing there now. And the property would be connected to town sewer. We've, we've proposed that trash receptacles take the place of dumpsters, which would be located on the left side, the south side of the project, next to one of the residential units. The, the property itself requires a massive upgrade. It's really in tough shape. And we believe, as we said in the application, that the design, a Victorian design with interesting angles and staggered entrances for residential and commercial units would fit nicely within the, within the neighborhood and would add, would complement its character. We also believe that, you know, this mixed use proposed for the property fits within the, the intent of the FCOD as recited in 9.7.1. In terms of the special permits that we're asking for, or the, the relief that we're asking for from this board, it would, it just addresses the front and rear setbacks. Most all of the dimensional requirements of the project fit within the current dimensions. However, the, what we would need are front, relief from the front and rear setbacks. The existing front setback for the property, as it now sits, is 2.5 feet. We request that we be able to bring it right to the, the property line so that there would be no setback. And then what we are asking is to maintain the rear non-compliant grandfathered setback of 9.3 feet. 10 feet's required, and we suggest that the relief we're asking for is de minimis. In terms of the, the other relief needed under the zoning code, we've proposed five spaces, two of which are in, are within garages on the first floor of two of the unit, the two new residential units. Under 9.7.8 of the code, one parking space is required for each one-bedroom unit and 1.5 spaces are required for each other residential unit, more than one bedroom. Since we have three with two bedrooms, the, the spaces required are 4.5. We're providing five units. Now, what that leaves is the commercial, the commercial unit without any off-street We submit that under 9.7.10, parent one, the planning board can reduce parking for mixed use within the FCOD by up to 50% if it's shown that the parking by residential commu- and commercial units don't compete with each other at peak times and up to 30% if there is competition at peak times. We submit to the board that there wouldn't be any conflict. Most of the residential uses would be gone during the day and the commercial unit would have business primarily during the day. Also, we think there's ample off-street parking, both on Coac acid Street and Wall Street, on most every, most every day. With that.
Just on that, just to clarify.
Sure.
So do I understand that you'd be proposing to utilize some of the vacant residential spaces for commercial use during the day?
If they're available, sure, yes, yeah. But under 9.7.10, we suggest that the, in the FCOD, this kind of circumstance is actually, was actually contemplated and provided for. This is a small, 1,000 square foot commercial unit, which would most likely be an office, which would be utilized during the day, and again, primarily during the work week. But to the extent parking isn't even off, off of the, the property itself, we submit that there's some, there is available parking on street. The, the thing we're battling with is the fact that this, this property is, is small and to do the renovation necessary to connect to sewer, to put in stormwater, requires an awful lot of expenditure and we can't just sit with the existing property, the existing two units. Just wouldn't make any sense. If, if a redevelopment of this type and an expansion isn't allowed, we'd probably just do a basic, minimal improvement to the existing property, which wouldn't benefit the neighborhood. It wouldn't, it's not what our client wants to do, and we would really like the ability to make this a, a much safer and more appealing property through this development.
So back to that parking issue, again, based on what you had just specified from the regs, is that we could be contemplating a waiver of up to 50% or potentially up?
Either 30 or 50, to the extent there's.
How do you make those numbers work? Because what you're asking for is totally zero, yeah.
No, it, under the, under the FCOD, you combine the parking need for residential and commercial, and what we have is a requirement of, I believe, eight, nine units. Nine parking spaces, and what we're providing are five, above 50%. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
Also, the FCOD regulations refer to our off-street parking requirements, and it says on-street parking spaces and parking spaces within a municipal lot within, I'm sorry, located within 500 feet of the lot will continue to be available. So it's, I'm sorry, I'm not reading this right. All required off-street parking spaces for all users other than residential and more than family dwelling usage shall be located in the same lot. Contracts or usements for parking and other blah, blah, blah. Okay, sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. There is, there is a, there, there is a, a way to then park on the street. We have a way to, to waive that, so even if you feel uncomfortable with the 50%.
No, I was curious, because it didn't make sense.
Right, no, I, I didn't complete the presentation, so.
Do you have any larger plans you could share with us that show the parking spaces on the property? I thought we should have had 17 by 24 inch.
You had a hard copy.
I do have a.
Sorry.
I brought the larger one.
I brought him here on the board as well.
That's, yeah.
And again, I apologize, I didn't bring my easel with me today.
This is Hazem Danny, the engineer who worked on the project. And it's C300 is the.
I also ask, you had referenced, and I'm not sure I understood this either, because it was one of my issues when I reviewed the plans. You had asked about closing, you've spoken about closing down curb. Right, and so what, what do you, could you be more specific about that? So is it that, that entire radius around the property would no longer be open? Is that what you're proposing?
Sure, and Hazem, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're removing the one on the turn, right on the corner, and putting in two new ones, one on Wall Street, one on Coac acid Street.
In front of each driveway, each garage?
The two existing curb cuts, one on Wall Street and one on Coac acid are going to remain. The one that we're going to infill is a safety concern because it's right on the, it's on the radius and it lets you out into the railroad crossing.
Right.
That's the one we're going to do away with. We met with the police chief and the fire department and they were both satisfied that, you know, that, that reduces that safety issue.
So now you will have three separate cuts on the, on the property itself, or is it two?
Two, and they're existing to remain. We've proposed attaching in that one curb cut with vertical granite curb to match what's on the street and then replacing the sidewalks. Sidewalks are kind of in that area. And then when we, we do the sewer work, we'll set a sewer manhole and put a force main in, pre-do the sidewalks there, reset the curb, so it'll look a lot nicer.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, do you have anything from fire?
Well, first one is from Scott Shippey, the building inspector. He says, after further review, the plans are, that are submitted are inconsistent per fire department and board of health, the dumpster location should be revised to show only trash receptacle storage containers as shown on plans C200, C201, and C300. The elevation and 3D renditions do not reflect these changes and should be revised to be consistent with fire department and board of health regulations.
The site plan accurately shows what the board of health requests were. The 3D rendering, when it was updated, we just simply missed in that corner right there. That 3D rendering is showing a dumpster enclosure and that's not what we're proposing. We're proposing.
With this car.
Trash bins with the sealed lid, you know, nice, neat, compact, not loud in the middle of the night, emptying dumpsters, so that's what we're proposing.
Matthew Brennan from the, the Director of Public Health writes, the property has a failed septic system, must be connected to town sewer system. The revision provides sewer service as required. The dumpster was removed from the property due to a lack of space and safety concerns. Therefore, the business within the commercial space must not be a food service establishment, waste disposal company, or other that needs a dumpster service. The current revision shows a car backing up onto Wall Street sidewalk, which would be a safety concern. So I don't know if you corrected that or not.
So again, my name is Fadareka, my name is Hazem Danny. I'm the civil engineer for the project, and I will try to address those comments one by one. But again, for the board of health, yes, the dumpster was removed and we are proposing trash bins on the side. For the backing onto the sidewalk, I believe this is just because of the graphical presentation of the car on the Coac acid side, when they are tried to turn around on site because we weren't allowed to back onto on common traffic.
Right.
There's a, again, a little piece or a little triangle of the graphical presentation encroaches on the existing sidewalk. We can revise the figure if needed to show that the vehicle would be able to turn around on site without encroaching on the sidewalk if that.
I think you should, I think you should do that.
We can do that.
Just alleviate any concerns about that.
If that planning board is open to making that as a condition of an approval. Was there another comment that?
I'm just going through this real quickly. Did I miss one?
There should be another one from Mr. Shippey.
Mr. Shippey also says, I reviewed the application for 30-32 Wall Street. At this time, the applicant should be made aware they will need to obtain approval from the design review board in accordance with section 9.2.4. Applicability reviewed by the design review board is required for exterior activities within the design review district when site plan review or a special permit is required or when building commissioner determines that the proposed exterior activities are sufficiently extensive to materially affect the character of the surrounding area. This building will need to have an automatic fire suppression system, a sprinkler system, which require a separate water connection. The connection will need to be approved and permitted by the Department of Works. Property owner shall ensure the proposed parking as submitted will be maintained as such. Is that it?
Yeah, and, and we had discussed previously the design review, but they wanted to wait until they had a little more, bigger design, more idea of what they were going to do before presenting to design review.
Okay. And I had, I had read 9.2 to essentially say that, because we were going for special permits and site plan approval, that it would be either this board or Mr. Shippey who would say, okay, now, if, if it's okay, we're kicking it over to the design review board for their review and input.
Comfortable with, you know, what we're proposing goes with the town, and we're not proposing some modern-looking building.
No, we get that.
Yeah. That's a drastic improvement over what's there currently in the previous application, so.
We have another view of the building. That will be the view of the building on Coac acid Street.
Looks like Sky from Arizona.
It would all be great if it was like our current weather.
Yeah, the tumbleweeds coming down Wall Street.
So let me ask you, so I mean, I know you don't know who the office tenant will be. Do you have any concerns that if it's, let's say, an accountant, an attorney, a doctor, whatever, that they won't be open or they will be open on a Saturday as well as the five normal workdays? And how will that impact your, your parking scenario if they do that?
The commercial space will need to park in, in the town parking lot or along the street in Coac acid and.
What about their, what about their business guests? They'll have to do the same?
Yeah, mark down the sidewalk.
We're, we, to the extent this board is, is comfortable with it, we're going to be constrained in terms of renting to commercial tenants in terms of the parking. They'll have to understand it and either agree or not.
Right. Anything else from the board?
Do we have, we don't have comments yet on engineering or anything from our consultants at this point, right? The only thing I was going to say is in terms of, there was a different visual that I had seen and reviewed today in terms of that turning around. It was kind of wild, actually. It's actually, no, it's different than that.
That was a draft plan that we prepared for discussion with the department heads.
I kind of got the gist of it, but I just wanted to make sure that someone was taking a look at that, to make sure that that's workable and doable.
Get a copy here if you want to see it, Jeff.
No, I actually had seen it today, so I kind of know what it is, but. That was my concern when I looked at it earlier.
What about, we talked about the snow removal too, or the locations for that?
There are snow removal, well, snow storage spaces, one to the back, one to the left side of the plans I saw today.
Point those out.
Yeah, one sec.
Thanks.
So we're proposing snow storage towards the back here and then over there next to the trash bins. the trash bins. And then also this area could be open for snow storage, uh, without encroaching on the town, uh, town's property or right of way.
But aren't you having people back up there?
We are, but in winter conditions, sometimes you need to use, uh, parking spaces for snow storage or.
Okay, then the person's going to have to back out onto Coacit Street if you put snow there.
They may have to, but that's a temporary condition during snow.
Worst time of the year to do it.
Yep.
Could you just show me on that visual where those three curb cuts would be? Obviously, one to the left, I understand that.
This one will be closed.
That'll be.
It's shown in, uh, dark lines.
Yeah.
Then this one from here to there, I believe it's about 26 feet or so, or might be a little bit larger.
Yeah.
Uh, this is existing to remain.
And then just over on Coacit.
Yeah, and then on Coacit from this point to this point, that's existing to remain also.
Okay, thank you.
How you propose to get the snow to that back corner?
Snow blower.
I would be concerned about the, uh, the fence that is currently there being damaged. Well, I just.
To the left, you mean, like along, along, yeah, the Wall Street property.
You're pushing it into that location now.
We're aware of our neighbor's fence and, you know, we know not to plow snow against it. It's been there all winter, we haven't plowed snow against it.
Well, you also haven't been using the building. And we haven't had that much snow.
Yeah, the trash cans weren't there.
We haven't had much snow in the last four years.
I hear you. So if there's anything else from the board, then, um, if anyone in the audience has a question or comment, please just come up to the microphone so we can hear you and, and record you and, uh, just state your name and address for the record. How you doing?
Good evening. And how are you?
I live at 24 Wall Street, Lee Nichols. Thank you for hearing me tonight.
No problem.
Uh, yeah, I have a few things that I have to address. Uh, when you were talking about that backup on the corner, none of these plans show the signal, which is there. So when they show the cars backing out, if the snow is there, this, that doesn't show where the signal is in, in relationship to where they're backing up. There's only one plan.
The train signal, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's only one plan that shows it, but all the other plans they have don't show it. So it's like, it's hard to tell how it's going to work.
Sure, please.
The one that's got the radius is on there.
With the radius?
Yes.
Somewhere in here, there's a signal.
Right.
Doesn't, doesn't say, so when they're going to put snow here or whatever, they're.
True, right.
You know, it could, you know, you already talked about it, they have to back straight out. Thank you.
And then the other thing is, uh, I think it's on the Coacit side where, uh, was it 21 Coacit Street? They, they plan to push snow along the side of the building next to where that garage is. There's a set of stairs there. They're going to have to go onto the other guy's property in order to get the snow around there because it's only, it's not a snowplow.
It's back here.
Yeah.
You're over here.
Right in here. So it's going, there's a set of stairs in one of the pictures. So when they go to plow the snow, yeah, it shows nice snow over here, but they're going to have to come around here. And I'm pretty sure that God knows that problem, he doesn't want that. He would be here tonight, but he had surgery and he wasn't able to make it. And then on, like you brought up the fence on my side?
Yes.
Now, they're going to put small trash bins there, that's fine, but the thing is, that also takes away from the 10 feet. Okay, I know it's only a small trash bin, but when you're plowing, now you're two feet over or whatever it is, so now they're going to be close to the fence.
Snow blower, they said.
And what's, what's the stop then? You have a car here?
Right.
Okay, what's the stop that say down the road a bit? These bins get whatever, they put them in the garage, whatever. And I'm talking about, you know, this is, this building is going to be used by humans. So they're going to do what, someone wants to pull in here, they're going to pull in here to go there. They're not going to walk all the way around. They're going to drive in here, go there. So they're going to, you've got to think of the human aspect of this building and what it could happen. And like you brought up, Saturdays, someone comes in, they're going to go where they're going to go. And I know there's parking all over here on the street, but they're short of space. It's raining out, you're going to want to get there.
The gentleman who was behind was here the last time we had this, this hearing and, and he made it clear that he did not want anybody, you know, on the property.
Someone slips, falls, he liable for that. And I'm just concerned about more cars being parked, you know, like on the wall, on, uh, the side where my fence is, that once they push the snow in there, they say, oh, let's put a car here. You know, trash barrels might be there, but they'll squeeze a small car in there, then another cars behind that one. And then you've got a car in the garage, someone pulls up in front of the garage door, now you've got all these cars, someone wants to get out, it's just, and then I know they had a plan here with all the different ways they're going to back out.
They did.
And that's, it works, I mean, everything works on paper. But, uh, it just seems like this, you know, they said they downsized the building and everything, but very small. It's not downsizing footprint. And if you look at the plans, they're, they're like depicted on a, like a, a perfect world, like if you look at some of the pages on this white field, it doesn't show my fence, doesn't show the other parking lot, doesn't show the other things that, that still affect this property, you know?
Right.
So I'm kind of like, you know, and then we didn't get these till like three days before, you know? And then you're pulling out a bigger plan, which has dimensions that I might have wanted seen, you know, it's just, I don't know. And I was going to ask the board if I could get some sort of buffer. I have signs on my fence that say, "Don't push the snow against there." That, to me, that's, it's just a sign. It's, it's not just the snow, I'm just worried about cars, doors, and then I got to, you know, submit a thing to my insurance company and everybody knows insurance has gone up and everything. I just don't want to, you know, have that problem. And then the other thing is, not only cars parking along the fence, but they could drive in this way head on.
Mm-hmm.
And if you look on the other property on, I think it was, oh, I can't, I'm not going to go from there through the pages, but if you go along here, this parking lot here.
Yes.
When I put this fence up, I bought and paid for concrete bumpers to be put, put here.
To protect the fence.
And I worked with the, the guy and the landscape of the plows this way to make sure no fence gets, no snow gets in. So he puts all the snow here, but in order to get that snow back there, I don't know.
The applicant said he's going to use a snow blower because he's not going to plow.
I, I have a snow blower and I, I don't know how he's going to get the snow in there.
Well, if it's eight feet, if it's eight feet, they're going to be game for it, you know? I'm just saying that, you know, I mean, I.
They, I'm sorry, they can't hear, you need to speak into your microphone.
Yeah, I'm just.
We apologize.
I'm just saying they, you know, they wouldn't, uh, someone could just come in there and plow it, you know? Nice warm truck, snow blower, you know? I'm just really concerned about it. It's a very, I know it's a very tight lot and everything. I thought it was going to be downsized more. I know you approved the 10-foot, you know, 10-foot side lot. That was, you know, and that's, that's your, that's what you decided. It just seems like you're, you're giving them a lot of, uh, you're lifting a lot of restrictions and they've got lots of, you know, to get this thing to work.
We haven't lifted anything yet.
Well, I'm just saying that they're asking for.
They're requesting, they're requesting.
They're requesting a lot of things from you and I just think that, you know, when it's all said and done, when it's all built, you know, I just want it to be a good fit. And then I looked at the plans and I didn't see any Victorian look to those plans, if you look at them. I'm, I'm a builder, but I didn't see any Victorian thing to fit into the town. Thank you for listening to me.
You're very welcome. Thank you for bringing your concerns. So anyone else in the audience who has any questions or comments they'd like to make about this prob, project? I'm thinking about, I don't know, what are we going to do? I'd like to see them make them a parking lot, I don't think they can charge people to park there.
Yeah, I think the snow's still a problem.
The snow is a problem.
Yeah, there's, there's still a lot of concerns here.
Are you moving in the right direction? I mean, we know you're ma, we know you're making an effort, but it's still, it's a very, I don't have to tell you, you own it, but it's a very problematic parcel. And I know that you paid good money for it and that you, you want to get a use in there. It's, it's just difficult. It's difficult for you and it's difficult for us to look at it and say, it looks fine.
I, yeah, the parking and the snow is where my concern lies.
Too many issues.
Yeah.
Too many.
May I, I don't know if anyone else is having any comments. I was, I was going to address any of them after they're done, but I.
No one else has raised their hand to say.
Okay, well, what, um, uh, what Mr. Nichols had, um, referred to, keep in mind that Jim is going to continue to own it. This is, these aren't going to be condos where people just kind of do what they, what they want. Jim is going to be maintaining this and there are, there are rules. He's, you know, assuming that he will damage people's property and trespass, that's, I mean, he won't do that and, and why assume that? You're not approving his ability to do that in any way. In terms of the, uh, the snow storage on the cu, on the corner, we can eliminate that altogether. And if.
You mean this little one here to the right?
Yeah, right, right on the corner, Mr. Chair. If, if there were, um, if there were a big storm, much like we did in 2015, snow would have to get, and Jim would have to deal with it, would have to get trucked out, um, just like all of us did, um, back the last time we had snow. So it's, you know, these concerns and, 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 um, projections assume that he's going to disregard property rights and break the law.
I don't think, that's not.
That's not the presupposition. The supposition is that Jim may have other fish to fry on another property he owns and he's not on site. His contractor may, you know, not intentionally, but he could damage the fence. He could create a snow pile, that's, that, that's, you know, that's, that's not right. He, you know, I don't expect Jim to be there directing traffic on the site every day, making sure that the parking's correct. I understand he's the owner, but realistically speaking, he, he may have other things that take him away from there on any given day and that's understandable. So, uh.
Yeah, just, I mean, we can't suppose anything, but, I mean, this parking and this snow removal, I don't think it's reality. And I appreciate you guys went back and did some more work to it, but, I mean, to get snow back there with a snow blower, I don't know what type of snow blower you have, it, that, none of this is realistic. It, it isn't.
I respectfully disagree.
That's fine.
We have a commercial, uh, snow blower and it's not unfeasible to push snow back here and then push it in this area. And there's no stairs in the back there that a snow pile would be blocking.
How are you going to get past the car?
Snow blow around it.
Oh, this is a disaster waiting to happen. And if they've got to back out onto, during the snow.
Oftentimes, a lot of times when, uh, you plow a parking lot, just like every resident or commercial parking lot, you plow when the people are away, move cars out, plow it, you wait for people to move and then you continuously plow it. It's, it's standard snow removal practice.
Yeah, the parking, um, access and egress, you've made moves in the right direction. I think the snow still needs to be addressed. It's, it really doesn't work. I mean, I have my own property in Kevin Holmes Properties and that's, it's really too tight. I mean, I'd rather have you come in and say, "We'll truck it offsite every time."
I mean, in, in fairness, I'm not sure that no, no storage on site would be really workable because there would be times in lesser events where, you know, and where would you draw the line? How would you?
Yeah.
Have to put a.
That's a good point.
We're agreeable to that. I mean, if we have a major snow event, uh, 10 inches of snow, you got to get rid of it. You got to make it safe. You got to make it safe for everybody, but the, the last couple of years, we've been having these three inches, two inches. You can't be hauling off snow for, for those minor events, especially when it's, you know, 50 degrees two days later. The neighbor actually stores snow. If you drive by there right now, you see our lawn is all peeled up in the back because he plows all of his snow on the back property here, so.
The parking lot behind you, you mean?
Yes, so it's being used for snow storage. It's practical to get it back there and, you know, we're not making an issue out of some practice that's happening and he's not damaging Mr. Nichols' fence either and he's plowing right up, you know, right close to it. You can literally see the lawn's peeled up right now.
If you have a comment, you can come up to the microphone and speak.
My name is Brian Cassie, I live at 28 Coacit Street. I'm your neighbor across the street. You missed out on something, folks. Two years ago, we got 30 inches of snow one day in January, 26 months ago. It wasn't eight years ago. It was 30 inches of snow, highest snow total in New England was in Sharon and Foxborough, Massachusetts. I went out the next day, it was eight degrees. I got frostbite on my feet and I have neuropathy from that, so I know exactly when it was and it wasn't eight years ago.
Was it 2021?
Two years ago.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're supposed to speak to the board, not to the.
But you, you can make your point, that's all.
Right.
Yeah.
So the average snowfall in Massachusetts is 40 inches and we haven't had 40 inches this year, but we have had 100 inches sometimes and we have had 30 inches at one. I've been in Foxborough for 35 years. We've had more than two feet of snow on, in the snowfall many times and last one was two years ago, uh, and, uh, I was injured in that, so I know when it was. So, um, it's a, um, we're, we're glad to have you in the neighborhood. It's a terrible corner already. There's a, when you come up Wall Street, there's a stop line in the road and if you stop at that stop line and you look left, you see your house. Can't see anything. So it's already really, really difficult corner to negotiate and the, and the railroad crossing bar is halfway down all the time, which confuses people. Anyway, I, uh, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we move forward?
I'm good, I said my piece.
Want to, was there something else you wanted to add, Mr. Corey?
What, um, you know, as Jim, as the applicant has said, um, he's, he's more than willing to commit to moving snow offsite if there's a material, um, storm, just as we would all do with our properties, um, commercial, rental or otherwise. We're, we're not saying we wouldn't and I'm, I'm not up on meteorological history, but, you know, we'll, he'll, he will do.
Needs to be safe.
Yeah, it, he will provide the parking and the snow storage as needed and remove it if needed because it, it won't be just the neighbors, but the, but the tenants at the property who will be furious. He has to do it.
You know, and, and since you, since you brought this up, I mean, the, the, one of the concerns from the board earlier was, and I, and it still is for me, I don't know, I mean, um, I don't know if Jeff or anyone else has a concern about it in terms of that, the swing of the vehicles that you, that you show on there. I mean, it's, you know, it, it's, it's beautiful as a drawing, but realistically, I mean, how are you going to, like, this passenger car that's behind the three unit? I mean, realistically, I mean.
They're going to pull out.
They're going to pull out and then, and then maybe go forward. I just don't see how they're not going to back out into the street. I don't see them backing around, making a curve and then somehow.
I think that's thinking they're going to go this way.
Yeah, that, yeah, so, but they're, you know.
And that's where the snow.
I would, I would just say to that, Kev, I, you know, I don't presume to know turning radiuses or anything, I'm not an engineer. And that's why I just thought I, we needed some feedback on that, to see if it's practical. And in terms of backing out on the street, I mean, I back my car into my driveway every night just to avoid that. Yeah. I mean, there, there are, you know, habits and things, you know, that's, you know, I don't want to overly judge, uh, or maybe nitpick an application, uh, for those. No, and I hear you and I mean, I'm, you know, on the one hand, the snow, the snow issue is one thing, but this, for me, this is more of a public safety thing, both for the driver and for anybody else, you know? It is. Yeah, anybody walking along the street.
Mr. Chair, would back in into the parking space resolve that problem?
No.
So that the resident will pull forward?
You, you know, you can put a sign there that, you know, all day long that says, "Back in only." But the tenant, the tenant may, you know. But the tenant, the tenant may, you know, be in a rush. Maybe he's got to get into the apartment to answer a phone call, go to the bathroom, whatever it might be. So it's just human nature. I'm not, I'm not saying engineering wise, you can't make it work. I think you can, that's your job. I'm just concerned about, you know, the reality. This is a, you know, I don't have to tell the applicant, he knows, he bought this place and it is a very difficult parcel to both develop and also to maintain, you know, the businesses there or the residents there for people's behavior. And it's tight and I think it's tough. It's a tough site.
I ask that the board keep in mind the fact that Jim is an experienced property owner and manager. These aren't going to be people who own these units and do what they want without having to answer to them. The obligation to turn around will be built into the leases and if they violate them, we'll treat it seriously.
What are you going to do? Eviction in Massachusetts?
No, find them.
And then you got to get the money. I, you're still going back to human behavior.
Is there a rear egress of that commercial?
No.
No.
A rear egress at all?
No. Now, the gentleman who owns this property made it very clear that they.
No, I meant passage door.
Oh, I see.
No, because they got rid of.
I see.
Egress is out the front and sides.
Out the front and sides, he said, are the egresses, so.
I'm on board. Well, I think we're going to continue it anyway because we need the consultant, right?
Right.
We need design review.
Right, I'd like to see that.
Do you want a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to.
Continue?
Continue. The public hearing, special permit site plan 30-32 Wall Street, proposed remodel and expansion of an office commercial mixed-use project, TNC Development LLC, True North Construction, Inc., until?
April 25th.
April 25th. Time?
7:10.
7:10.
7:10.
Second?
Aye.
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 Can I request also that when you do come back, you bring us some plans that we can all have copies of, the 24-inch? That have all this information on it?
Sure.
Thank you.
And if you have the ability to bring it in a digital format, then we can share it on the screen.
We did email it. We put it on a thumb drive and I provided a couple of 24 by 36.
If you could bring a laptop and do the presentation yourself, that would be best.
We should have six copies of 24.
Yes.
And oh, six, okay. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Being sometime past 7:20 PM, we have a request for a minor modification of site plan approval at Gillette Stadium, construction of a pedestrian bridge spanning Route 1, Foxborough Realty Associates LLC.
Hi, Mr. Krantz.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, sir.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
How about you? Dan Krantz with the Kraft Group. I have with me Brittany Gessner from VHB Virtually. We are here this evening to review a proposed pedestrian bridge over Route 1. It's roughly in the vicinity of our.
Hold on a second. Can somebody shut the door, please? Thank you. Sorry, Dan. I couldn't hear you.
It was, it's roughly in the location of our lot 23 on the south side of Route 1 and our P10 lot on the north side of Route 1. It's right above, in essence, the location where our current pedestrian, game day pedestrian crossing is. We've met earlier with fire police, planning and the building departments and have reviewed the plans. I believe you've seen Peter Tam's letter and the minor modification checklist to which we've done. We've brought in a couple of larger renderings today, but at the end of the day, you know, this is really about the public safety. It's not about butts in seats. It hopefully gets butts in seats faster, but it's really something that I know police and fire have been looking at for years and I think we have an opportunity to talk about a way to get it done after all these years. All the structure is located on private property. The bridge spans the Mass Highway right of way, but all other structures are on private property. As is mentioned in the letter, we recently have submitted 25% documents to Mass Highway for their review. We're currently working with the town and with public safety on funding, both at the state and federal level. There are grants that are available, but one of the big check the box things for grants are, have you gone through and do you have all your local approvals? So that's what we hope to do tonight, is going to be able to check that box so as we're pursuing these funding sources that we can say that we've gone through and have these local approvals. The desire is to tap into monies that are supposed to be freed up for World Cup, so ideally that's our mission to have this bridge up and operational in early 2026. I know Gabby had sent earlier a couple of comment files from police, fire and building department. Brittany in VHB has responded to that and if you have any questions, that's why Brittany is on the line here with us tonight. She can, she will happily answer any questions that she might have.
Thank you for this letter. The format is great.
So. At this time, I guess I'd open it up to questions and comments and take it from there.
So, I mean, just for the record, I mean, the police department had comments, VHB did respond to them, one about the width of the bridge and also elevation permits. And then, not required, but since we live in New England, a covered bridge would ensure the bridge is open without delay. That's acknowledged. The design team will consider that, the project implications of providing a covered bridge. Building Department has had the opportunity to review and discuss the plans submitted. No objection, no response required. Fire rescue, plan shows light poles on the ramp systems and walkways, however, does not show how the actual elevated platform will be illuminated. Other than that, we are okay with the design as presented. Elevated platform will also be illuminated using light poles in a similar fashion to the rampets and walkways. Any questions from the board?
Is it anticipated or this would be secured for non-event times or open all the time?
I think that the desire that we have heard, because the sidewalk system's on Route 1, was that they would like to have it open.
Just to get people across.
Because it actually works out great. People don't have to actually cross Route 1, even if it's at grade, they're now afforded that opportunity to go above it and not have to worry about an at-grade crossing.
Anything from staff? Any questions?
No.
Nope.
Anyone in the audience has questions about this application? Comments?
I do have one question, Kevin.
Yeah, please.
In earlier on discussion with the bridge and Gary and I were speaking of this today, is the design of this bridge going to allow for an emergency vehicle to traverse it if needed?
It does. It will be, and Brittany correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's H20 loaded?
10.
H10, sorry.
Okay.
So a box truck, basically, size of a box truck, and we did talk, so an ambulance and ambulance will make it over there.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, good. I make a motion to approve the request for my modification to site plan approval at Gillette Stadium, construction of a pedestrian bridge spanning Route 1, Foxborough Realty Associates LLC.
I'll second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks, Brittany.
That was the easiest thing we've done with you in a long time.
What's missing?
Yeah.
You do know you're, this is recorded, right?
Do you need federal approvals for this too? Because you're across the highway?
Just state.
Thanks. Tell Peter Reese hi.
Being sometime past 7:30 PM, we have a public hearing, special permit, 73 Main Street, construction of an eight-unit multifamily dwelling for Briarwood Construction Corporation. Oh, the applicant.
I was like, Gabby, are you leaving?
So once again, making the presumption that several of you may be here for this particular hearing. If you want to, if you want to comment, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record and you'll be free to ask whatever questions or make comments.
And I would just ask, if somebody's already made the comment, you don't need to repeat them. Thank you. Please.
Thank you.
Didn't bring Cam with you.
Get him a night off.
He did really great. The last presentation I told Diana.
I watched it.
Just taking notes at home, you know, it's nice.
You smiled at the wrong time. Feel like Mr. Buckley's moving in.
You're right.
Well, he's here for the duration, so.
Oh, he's here for everything?
So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley and I'm here representing the applicant at Briarwood Construction for the construction of a eight-unit multifamily dwelling at 73 Main Street. So I'm going to just put up, share my screen here. So what we have here, this is the site and just to orient you, this is the Mormon church over here on the other side of Main Street. At the bottom of the screen is heading toward the center of town, across the street or heading up on the screen is heading toward Chestnut Green. So this site is a, it's a 1.5 acre parcel of land. You can see how it's outlined here in the green. And it also includes a small parcel up here to the, off the screen right here that's been included when Briarwood purchased, I think it was 18 Glenwood Ave.
Can you just point that out where you're?
Sure.
Oh, okay, well, over there, all right, fine, thanks.
So in order to make up the area for the project, but the main portion of the site is that's what has usually been there. I know it's hard to read, but if you wanted to look on sheet, sheet two of your, the existing, the plan set, and maybe I'll open that up as well, that shows the existing conditions. So what there is there now is there's a six-unit, two-story multifamily building that's been there, is actually initially owned by the Ferguson's, purchased recently by the Briarwood Construction. So the site is located in the R15 zoning district. It's also located in a water resource protection district, Zone 3. So we're here before the board this evening for two special permits. First special permit is for the use, which is recorded in the R15 zone for a multifamily. And the second special permit is because we're in the water resource protection district, Zone 3, which is not a well area, that is an area that feeds a well area. And if we have more than 15% of the lot impervious, that kicks in that special permit as well. So the site is currently served by municipal water coming in off of Main Street. It has a septic system. There is no sewer down in that area. And what we propose to do is we'll be tearing down the existing building and putting up the building you see right here. It will be a two-story building. It was very similar to the one that was built on Glenwood Ave at the end of Glenwood. And each of the units will have two bedrooms and they'll have single car garages with them. So the cars will park one outside, as you can kind of see here, one outside, and then there's space in front of the garage door to have a second vehicle. In addition to that, there's nine additional spaces right in this area here. So each garage would have a car and in front of it would have another vehicle and then you'd have enough space back here in order to put nine additional vehicles. Foxborough zoning requirement for a multifamily dwelling is 2.25 units, I'm sorry, 2.25 spaces per unit. This site has 3.1 spaces per unit, so it's more than the required parking. The site right now does not have any stormwater on it at all. It is, it's a gravel and paved parking lot and it has, you know, just nothing on it, which is not surprising in this area. But what it does have is, at the time Main Street was rebuilt, I want to say back in like 1989-ish, maybe a little bit later than that in the 90s, the town came in there and built and redid the drainage on that street. And at that time, the town, or Mr. Ferguson, asked the town to put a stub into his property. So down here in this corner, there's an 18-inch stub that ties into the 18-inch drain that's on Main Street. And I'm pointing that out because I'm going to be coming back to that later. What we're proposing is it'll have its own onsite septic system. I know it's hard to see, we've shaded it out because it's, you know, really a background thing, but the septic system will be located over here on this side of the building. We've done soil testing on the site. It's been witnessed by the Board of Health. And we've also done soil testing, in addition to the septic system, we've done soil testing in the front of the building and that would be for the drain system that I'll talk about in a moment. Soils are suitable for onsite septic and onsite groundwater recharge. As you, as you, if you look at the site, I think most people are familiar with it. It's relatively flat going back and then it has actually a dip in the back there, a low area, which is kind of in this area here. And then it starts to go up again in the hill. So down in the frontier, it's roughly 290 elevation, 290 feet above sea level. In the middle here, it's maybe 288. And then as it goes up, it goes up to 296. So you can see relatively flat, drops, has a low spot in the middle and then goes back up toward the rear. The, what we're proposing is, is we have to deal with the DEP stormwater standards, which the town's regulations follow and mirror. So what we have to do is to, the major thing here is to make sure that the rate of runoff from the site is not any greater than it currently is. And so in this particular portion of the property, runoff goes off in about three different locations. It goes off kind of here to the northwest. It goes into the southeast area and then some of it goes off towards Main Street. So when we do our design, we have to make sure that we look at all the different ways that it goes and make sure that we have, we're not increasing the rate, the runoff going toward any of those design points. We don't have our peer review yet back. We're waiting for that from Weston and Sampson. Expect that back in two weeks, I think.
Yes.
Not next week, but the week after. the site to the point where we have no more leaving the site than currently leaves it. It also improves the recharge on the site, because currently you have very little recharge, but now you'll have recharge. That's a good thing for a storm, for a Water Resource Protection Overway District. So, recharging clean water into the ground, and the runoff coming from the roof is considered clean, and then before that runoff from the parking area goes into the system, it's run through a water quality in that, that also cleans it. So, that's the system, that's the basics of the stormwater system.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Yes.
I know that you say that you can't discharge any greater flow than does today.
Yes.
Is there any way through whatever proposed system you have or an alteration to this system that you can alleviate some of the existing flow from the Sinclair's and the Wheeler's where there's been water in their, in their yards from before? Some of it may have come from the site, some of it may not, but is there, is there, is there any possibility that, that this recharge system can be designed to handle some of that?
So, yes. Short answer is yes. So, I don't have a, I don't have a definitive answer.
Okay.
Because I only, I only got this, you know, this, these information recently. But I have looked at it, and in this area here, the elevations seem to be able to allow me that the grades can work to tie into this, our proposed drain system. It won't be into the infiltration system.
Right.
But it'll be runoff into the town drain system. And since it's clean runoff, I imagine that the DPW director would not have an issue with that. If it was dirty runoff, then it would be.
Yeah.
But I, I think we can do that. I think we could put a drain along this lot line.
Right.
So that we can tie directly in.
What about the other side, Bill?
The other side, I can't, unfortunately. I've looked at this before, and actually, I looked at it when we were doing 17 Glenwood. Because Mr. Feroni said, you know, if we can help that issue, we can, we will help it. The problem is, is the backyard is lower than the drains in the street, so you can't get the water into it. So, we've looked at that, and we wanted to do it, but we, we, the elevations don't work. On the other side, they definitely do work.
You couldn't put fill in?
On their property, you can't...
Well, here's the thing, I don't know who's...
Sinclair's.
...sent us, but I mean, if I'm them, and that can stop my yard from flooding, they might be open to it.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know what that, I don't know how much we'd have to fill it to do that. The other thing that's, that's happening here is the drain, the drain is a low spot for this, so it, Main Street, it's draining in this direction.
Okay.
And then up here, it's draining in this direction. So, the low spot is over here by the Sentry Company, as you're looking at it, the left side.
Yep.
That's where the big drain runs. So, this elevation, the elevation up here is higher than this. So, that was just one of the issues. But I will look at it, and then we will try and have a conversation with Mrs. Sinclair, though we've tried in the past, to see if it's, it's a possible solution. I already know my client is, is open to all mitigation.
Bill, a quick question too. Your, your, your snow storage space, that's on the, I'm on snow today. The snow storage space is up against the, is that the low point that goes into the Wheeler's yacht? Is that where the, they already have some flooding going on there?
Um, yes. That's where the snow storage is.
Can you point it out on the map?
So, is there a way to trap that, so it's not, once it's melt, I don't, depending on how much it is, how much snow there is, it'll be melting into a boat, you know, into that low area?
Um, what we probably can do there is...
It's over here somewhere. This is the Wheeler's, so I don't know exactly how much I'm looking for.
Could you show us, Bill, when you get a second on the map?
Yeah. What, the snow storage?
Yes.
That is on sheet, if you go to sheet...
Sheet eight.
Sheet eight.
Oh, okay.
Let me, I can call it up, actually.
Okay. Nice kind of a question while you're looking. How, how many units is Glenwood?
Six.
Six.
Glenwood?
Six?
I think it's six, yes.
I think I remember Feroni asked for eight.
Yes.
It's kind of like, it's like rope-a-dope here. We're seeing it again.
No, it's not. We're, this is what we're asking for. I don't, I don't do that. So, let me show you. So, this is what we were talking about this moment was, this is where we're showing snow storage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right there.
So, it'd be up against this. So, what I could do there, if that, if that's an issue, is I could make sure that that's pitched toward the parking area, as far as the grade goes. Yeah.
So, the snow melt would actually head back across the impervious surface?
Yes.
And then be captured.
So, you want it, you want it to be, you want it to hit in the grass, you want it to melt in the grass. That cleans it somewhat if there's any sand or anything in it, and then, but we could pick that up. I mean, right now, it's all basically flat, so I could pick that up a little bit and pitch it back toward the...
Parking lot?
Toward the, the parking area.
Yeah, these exact same conversations.
I don't remember.
Can, can we pull the meeting minutes from the Glenwood hearing?
From when? The Glenwood hearing?
The Glenwood. I'd like to see them, because I know we had a drainage conversation, and we were told that...
All the minutes are on the website. I'll, I'll figure out which, if you can send me the right direction.
Send me in the right direction. I don't remember what year it was.
Right. So, yes, and I, I read the letters, and I read the comments that it's made it worse. So, I, that's not what I believe. That's not what your consultant believes. So, what happens is, is you have horrendous rains like we've had, and your, your perception is that it's worse. But, you know, we can't go by perception, we go by engineering that's reviewed by your consultant that, that makes the answer, that makes, gives us something to, to measure, you know, what the perception of it is. And just for the heck of it, I knew this was going to come up. So, in a normal year around here, we get 44 inches of rain. That's an average year. You can go to the, you know, National Weather Service and check that. In this past year, we've got 62 inches of rain. That's 50% more. In the last three months, as of yesterday, not including the two inches today, okay, this is average of yesterday, we got, the average from January through March is about 10.9 inches. As of yesterday, it was 15.6, 50% more. And we're going to pick up two more inches today, so when we, when it gets measured tomorrow morning, it'll be 17 inches. So, you know, this is an unusual year. Every project I have, I have people saying that I've never seen it this bad before, and maybe you never have, you know, but I'm just pointing out that, pointing to areas that have water in them, now, they do. And, but we've, very wet year, so your perception could be that, oh, it's worse. And why is it worse? Oh, because that project down the street made it worse. It's worse, probably, because it's, it's a very wet year. And we've had it, it's 50% wetter than any other, in any, in an average year. So, we will do what, we certainly will do what we can on ma, making it better for anybody around us that we can. And as I said, we have consultants, your consultant has to review it to make sure that we're following the regulations, so that we don't have to rely on perception, we're relying on the regulations that are put into place for this. I can go back, is there any, we can go back to stormwater, but we can keep talking about it.
Where do those street drains discharge? Is it across the street?
They go, they go to, as you're looking at the Sentry Company.
Mm-hmm.
To the left lot line, out to the, the wetlands in the back there.
Yeah, it's a lot of wet out there.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to keep going.
Bill, this might be a reach, but on the northwesterly side, I know you had said that the grade of the property currently is lower than the grade of the drains.
Yes.
Would it be anything to be considered to do possibly, a pump system, just to alleviate that flow?
Yeah. But the person has to maintain it.
Right.
And pay for the, they have to pay for the pumps, and they have to maintain them, and depending how big the pumps are, it's, you know, could be expensive. But yes.
Okay.
So, what it would be, would be, you'd have a structure in the backyard, maybe like, I don't know, like a septic tank.
Right.
Depends how big the pumps are, because the pumps, it just depends how big the pumps are. They can't cycle so many times that they'll burn out.
Right.
That, that will base, that's what the size of the tank is based on. And then it would just pump up to a catch basin on the street or whatever's available. I'm not quite sure what's available in that area, but it could do that, yes.
Are these going to be sold or rented?
I, I imagine he wants to sell them.
Yep.
To my knowledge, the last time I asked, he had like one or two that he was still renting next door, but I'm, that could have changed by now. Keep going?
Yes.
Okay. So, one of the things we always talk about is lighting. So, lighting, there's no pole lighting on this project. So, what there is, is you'll have lighting above your garage door, just like your home, and you'll have garage, you'll have lighting at your, at your, your door, your man door, you know, per building code. So, that, that's the lighting you have. There'll be no shining out into the parking lot or anything like that.
What about safety for these nine spaces? I mean...
The additional ones, you mean?
Yeah. If I'm going out at 11 o'clock at night, and my car's over there, is it going to be in pitch blackness?
I, I don't think so, just because of the ambient light you have in this area. But, I mean, really, the only way you can do something like that, it would be pole lighting on the, that there. So, we could do it, but I was trying to not do it near the single-family houses.
Understood.
Um, so the, this will be the, this is the dumpster location in this area right here. So, truck can pull in, pick it up, back out, and pull out. The, it'll be, of course, it has to be concrete pad, it has to have a fence around it, it has to have a solid fence. The other thing is, maybe, I think the next thing I'd like to go to is...
Before you move off that one, last question. In the back area where the decks are, there's like a little symbol there, is that lighting or, or what is that? There's that little squiggle there by each deck.
What squiggle are you saying?
Little spider. These, these, these.
So, those, oh, those are water lines. Is that what that is, WSO? Those are the water, let me talk about this.
Yeah, I didn't say, that's a signal.
I was going to discuss that, but I'll just jump to that real quick.
Okay.
So, one of the things we were asked about, if you recall, over on Glenwood, the DPW asked us, could you make arrangements? Because Glenwood Ave is a dead end, and they don't like dead ends on their water. Do you make, make arrangements to loop water through?
True.
And we said yes. So, this design shows an eight-inch water line looping through from the back here all the way to the front. What I just want to point out to you is I don't need to do that. That's a total gimme. All I could have to do is come in off of Main Street, put a fire, probably a four-inch line into the, the building, and that's your fire, and then each unit would have a, just a, probably a one-inch connection off of a two-inch line. So, that's a significant cost that Mr. Feroni has said that he would do coming through that area.
Okay.
Let me just go to, I want to go down to the architect plans now, and so if you go to sheets A 1.1 would be a good one to look at. So, this would be the, this is what the buildings would look like. Again, I think it's similar to what, it's the same architect, and it was, this is what it is. It's 33 feet high, which is the same height as you would have a single-family house, you can have no more than 35 feet, and it's 30 feet high, and it's all around. So, you know, you look, if you looked at Glenwood Ave, 17 Glenwood, you look at the back, that's a walkout. There's no walkouts on these. And the reason for that is because the board recommended a town meeting, I think it was the last town meeting, that you would, we changed the building height issue, so now you have to count it a different way. So, really, walkouts are not practical for multifamily buildings. You just can't, can't make the numbers work as far as average height. So, this is what you'll look at. This is what the front looks at here, and if you go to the next sheet, this is what, again, the front, and here's the back of the building, is the middle there. Again, it's not a walkout, so you're just looking at two stories, just like you would for a house. And then the bottom would be the two sides, the left elevation and the right elevation. And that, and that's the color scheme that he's, you know, put there, but I'm sure he's flexible with that. It's just kind of a neutral New Englandy gray color.
How many bedrooms are these, do you know?
These have two bedrooms each.
Okay.
Now, what's that structure on the very left-hand end? A little shed roof there with a three-and-a-half pitch? What is that?
This one right here.
Top one.
Well, that, yeah.
Right there, yeah. That's the, um...
Sprinkler room.
Yeah. That's where the sprinkler is going to come in.
Okay. I didn't see you on your other drawing, that's why I asked.
Yeah, sprinkler room.
Okay. So then, let me, let me move on now to the next set of sheets. Well, the next two are the floor plans, if you wanted to look at those. This is sheet L 1.0. We got our landscape, brown, sadina, prepare this plan. I know it's kind of hard to see. Let me zoom in a little bit. Zoom out a little bit. So, this is the landscape plan, and let me just kind of walk through it, starting over here in the top left, as you're looking at the drawing. So, the, these are, is it, these, these are mixtures of, let me just make sure I'm saying it right. These are mixtures of arborvitae's and junipers. They're all six to seven feet high. In addition, you can see the house here to the, to the north. This would be a, this is a six-foot-high solid fence in that area there. Again, you have, these are TOs, which are arborvitae's down here, so you have arborvitae's, you have the six-foot fence, which creates a barrier, and then you have a mixture of the arborvitae's and the junipers. And here, these bigger... This one right here.
Top one.
Well, that, yeah.
Right there, yeah. That's the, um-
Sprinkler room.
Yeah. That's where the sprinkler is going to come in.
I didn't see you on your other drawing, that's why I asked.
Yeah, sprinkler room.
Yeah. Okay, so then, let me, let me move on now to the next set of sheets. Well, the next two are the floor plans, if you wanted to look at those. This is sheet L1.0. We got our landscape, brown, sadina, prepare this plan, I know it's kind of hard to see, let me zoom in a little bit. Zoom out a little bit. So this is the landscape plan, and let me just kind of walk through it, starting over here in the top left, as you're looking at the drawing. So the, these are, is it, these, these are mixtures of, let me just make sure I'm saying it right. These are mixtures of arborvitae's and junipers. They're all six to seven feet high. In addition, you can see the house here to the, to the north. This would be a, this is a six-foot-high solid fence in that area there. Again, you have, these are TOs, which are arborvitae's down here, so you have arborvitae's, you have the six-foot fence, which creates a barrier, and then you have a mixture of the arborvitae's and the junipers. And here, these bigger circles, these are hardwoods, and those are a combination of oaks and maples that would be in that area there. Of course, they're not going to start out small, but, you know, then they'll grow. So there'll be a little mixture looking on that side of the, of the hardwoods, and then the evergreens would be, and the, and the fence, it would be screening. And that would be all along this north side.
What's there now, Bill?
There's some big trees in this area here, and then there's some trees not that much, not as impressive anyways, in the back here. But they're all going to get lost because of the grading. We're just going to be picking the site up because of the grading. The site has high groundwater, so when we did the soil testing, we have to make sure that we're not in the groundwater. So the site's going to be brought up, and what we're doing over there on this side to bring it up is we have a wall. So this is a, a, a block wall, and it is, I think I have a detail of it on, this is on sheet seven. I thought I had a detail of it. I guess I don't. So this would be, it's a solid block wall, it would be the large block, you see it has texture on it. I'll make sure I, I add it to the drawing set, so you'll have a feel for the look. And then on top of that, 10 feet back, you're going to, will have the, this line of arborvitae's, junipers, and oaks behind that. And down here on the other side, again, it's the same type of mixture. So this would be fencing here, this would be the combination of arborvitae's and junipers. In the front yard, it's a mixture of trees, some of them are, I think they're maples, and then shrubs in this area here and here. So that's our landscape plan, we think it's-
So just to clarify again, on, on the other side, on the back side, basically, you're talking about a retaining wall, then you're going to be dropping down to the next abutting property?
Yes. So we're higher than that.
Yeah. How much higher?
It's going to vary depending on it. It's about, it's about five or six feet.
So where is that six-foot-high fence in relation to that wall, Bill? When you get a second?
It is about, it's about 10 feet behind it.
Okay.
So if you go to sheet three, it, it varies. So it's five feet, kind of in the middle, it's five feet, at the end toward Main Street is three feet. As you go toward the back, it's four feet. And you can look at the, those things, TW is top of a wall, BW is bottom of a wall.
Right.
It's three to five feet on that area. So I talked about the fact that we're running the new water line in, that is a, you know, what I would call a mitigation for this, for this. And we're also, um, one of the things we have to do is we talk about, you know, special permit criteria. So in my memo to the board, one of the things is, I, I went to special permits, section 10.4, and, you know, special permits are somewhat discretionary, but they're not absolutely discretionary. You have criteria that we have to meet, and in my opinion, you have to, if you want to not approve, you have to use that criteria and say, where is it not meeting that criteria? That's my opinion. So I would just briefly go through it, it talks about the first is community needs, this is more housing, so we're going from six to eight, constantly hear about, we need more housing, we need more housing, we need more housing.
State's taking care of that.
Yeah. Yeah, enough. So we need that, and it's also-
That's a good one.
It's relatively affordable, so everybody laughs at that, and it's true, it's, it is really laughable. But, you know, when you're paying half a million dollars for a condo, the new homes going up around a million and a half. So it is affordable for Foxborough. Traffic flow and safety, blocking and loading, traffic flow is just a non-issue. I think Main Street has like 16,000 cars a day, and we're talking about 20, um, maybe, let's be really mo, really hard, you know, 80 more trips, which, it's not even going to be that many, it's not 10 trips a day for a condo. So that is not an issue. Parking and loading, we meet the standards set out by the board in the zoning bylaw. Adequacy of utilities and other public services, talked about the fact that it's served by municipal water. We're going to be using the storm drain system for our overflow, and to hopefully mitigate some of the issues affecting our neighbors. There's no upgrade or requirement, upgrade or expansion of any infrastructure, it's in a highly developed portion of the town, near the Public Safety Building, not going to require additional police or fire. And as I mentioned, we're committed to extending the existing water main through the site to Main Street. Neighborhood character and social services, this is more nebulous, but my opinion is, you know, this is the R15 zone, this is where multifamilies go in Foxborough. And between, between Main, Chestnut, Coacet, and, you know, a portion of maybe Central over there. So, and I have a, a map that I'd just like to show real quick, that kind of lays out what the character of the neighborhood is. You know, it's hard to see, but let me zoom in a little bit. Actually, I put this together for another project. But we're down here, we're right in this area here. And everything you see in red is a two or three, two or more units building, and the yellow is single-family homes. So you can see-
What's the orange, that's industrial? Or otherwise?
I'm sorry?
The yellow ones, or the orange ones, whatever those are, to across the street?
Yeah, this is, it's either the church, or it's a commercial, so that's the church.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
This is the Sentry.
Sentry, yeah.
This is Chestnut Green, appears, I'm not sure what these are, that's-
Okay, I just want to-
So here's you a feel for what's going on within, say, roughly 500 feet of the site. Let's see where it's quite a bit of multifamily in there. Some of that multifamily is definitely old houses that have been repurposed. So, but it's multifamily, nobody's going to build a 1930's house for an eight-unit and try and make it look like that. So that's, that's my take on that. The, um, the growth management study encourages growth in already-developed areas infill to existing neighborhoods, and we don't see any use of social services beyond, you know, what, if used for a facility this type is anticipated. Another question was, was impact on the natural environment? So, you know, there were no wetlands or sensitive receptors on the property, it's currently developed and contains an existing six-unit multifamily home. Potential economic and fiscal impact of the town, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. So the tax revenue, of course, will increase with generated by the sale of each unit, in addition to one-time fees paid by permitting and construction. So this will be offset by the addition of children to the school system. So according to a CHAPA study, and I forget what CHAPA stands for, but it's some government agency, and you've seen this before, because we've used it for like Chestnut Green, for a multifamily two- and three-bedroom units, you can expect .3 children per unit. That's what you can expect, that's the number, they have the data, there's no better data that I've seen. I know people say, oh, it's going to be three or four kids. It's .3, and actually, the state hospital, the numbers came out right on the money. So you're looking at probably another three kids here. I don't know how many kids are currently there now, I have no idea, but if this was a standalone, nothing there, we're probably looking at about three children. Of course, the Foxborough school system has been in a decade-long decline in enrollment up until our visitors came, but, so anyways, so I don't think the increase will be an issue. So we have to do, um, the other thing is, is that we have, we have to deal with a special permit, because we're in a water resource, and we're more than 15% impervious. So, as I discussed, it renders more than 15%, so it does fall under it. The stormwater system was designed and built to mitigate the issue by being in compliance with the standards. We minimize, we designed to minimize erosion and sedimentation, maintain peak discharges below existing conditions, reduce the sedentous solids and phosphorus to improve water quality, and we're maximizing the recharge. As I mentioned, the volume of groundwater recharging will be increased by this project, and we're going to be altering about 1.2, 3 acres of the existing site, of which probably half of that is already altered, but we'll be further altering it. So I think I'll stop right there, and-
What's behind, like, what, what's there now, like, to the right? Yes. Nope? To the right? Yeah.
Single family.
No, just what's the land back there? Is it trees?
Right here.
The green, nope, the green.
Oh, here.
Yeah.
Yes. A lot of it is, some of it's cleared and grass, but most of it is trees.
You'll, you'll get an opportunity to speak in just a minute. Can we circle back to that retaining wall?
Yes.
Just so I understand, basically, this whole site is elevated, including on Main Street.
Yes.
Yes.
It's because of the water table. You know, I know, but you've probably been following the fact that buying the Mormon Temple, you know, one of the concerns is the fact that they have water issues. This, this part of town has high groundwater, and that's what we found when we did our soil testing. This, this part of town is on a divide. So if you look north, if you go north a little bit, not far, like the water on Baker Street goes to Boston Harbor. This water on this goes to the arrogant city bank. So we're on a divide, and what appears to happen, that, that area between Chestnut Street and, and maybe not too far from here, Glenwood, and the tracks, it's, it's all flat through that area there. If you recall, I don't know if you do, but Peterson and Othellet, that whole site was filled as well. We had to bring in four or five feet of fill on that site as well, to keep, to keep the houses above the groundwater. So it's high groundwater here, so that's why we're, we have to deal with that. It's expensive infrastructure.
You got that right.
Can we do a site visit?
Sure.
Can we arrange a site visit?
I'm sorry?
Can we, can we do a sidewalk, please?
Of course.
Thank you.
So when we do the sidewalk, what would you, what would you like me to mark out? The proposed building?
Yep.
Proposed parking areas?
Show us where that drain is, you know-
Show me where the drain is.
Yep, where you're going to put the dumpster?
Yep.
Please? And the snow?
Anything else from the board?
Are you, you're ra, are you raising the site, or is it raised already?
No, we're raising it.
And then you're going to have a basement?
Yes. Yep, these will all have basements. That's why we're raising it, if we didn't have, well, that's not even true. Because of the septic system, you know, that drives the drain too. So even if I put these on slabs, I still going to raise the site because of the septic system and the drain system as well.
Well, that's, I was just thinking about the basement and water, that's all. And then, what was I, oh, yeah, and then it shows on the, so the septic system designed for the proposed, the design has, let's say, two and a half baths per, and then an option for a half in the basement, so it's, that includes-
Yes, oh, and, and actually, my cover letter is wrong. Your EMI cover letter, it says three-bedroom units, they're two-bedroom units. So Title V, when you're designing septic system, it's based on bedrooms.
Yes.
So you can have 10 bathrooms, but it doesn't matter, it's based on bedrooms, which I, I guess they assume is the number of people live there. So they assume two people per bedroom, and it's 55 gallons per day per person, so it's 110 gallons per day per bedroom.
What, what about the potential half bath in the basement? What's the thinking there? I'm not a huge fan of that.
You know, I have one in my, I have a full bathroom in my basement, it, it's a game room down there, you can just use it for whatever.
Yeah, I have one as well.
I have one.
So typically, what, what would have to happen is, I'd, I'd have to look, I don't know how we designed it, but typically, that bathroom's going to have a pump.
Mm-hmm. It would have to.
I mean, we would like to get it out the basement floor, but it almost never works. So that basement has a little injector pump, and it pumps up and then pumps out.
And, and then, just getting back to kind of the, the site in general, so if approved and completed, this site would basically not have much in the way of contour. I mean, you'd have to do a little pitching for your parking area, but you'd be having basically a pretty flat site.
Yes. So let me zoom in here a little bit, make it easier for you to look at. So you can see here, this is elevation 291, and you can see how it goes, 291, 292, 234. See how it comes up quick?
Yeah.
That's because we're filling the site. And then just what you just said is, you know, this is 294, 295, I think that's 295.7.
Yeah.
So that area would be flat.
Yeah.
And then it, and then it, and as I pointed out earlier, this is the grades, so you can see, this is relatively flat, and then it, those contours are close together, which means we're, we'll be cutting into that hill back there and grading up. And then this area back here won't be disturbed, because we don't, we don't need to go back there that far, we just need to go this far.
So I'm sorry, say that again, we're going to have to go back-
So this area back here-
Lot one and, and Lot C, that back there.
Right here will not be disturbed, because we're, this, where this purple is, that's the limit of our disturbance.
Okay.
Because we don't need to go back into that portion of the site.
So you're going to leave the trees and whatever's back there?
Yes.
All right.
You could put that limit of work on.
No, we have, we have scheduled a, a meeting with town staff to, to go over the plans. The engineers from Weston and Sampson are reviewing the stormwater. Like Bill said, we expect in two weeks to get their, their comments, and then we can, to give Mr. Buckley enough time to respond before the next hearing.
And one matter there, because I assume this will be, be an issue going forward on this particular application, is if there are any provisions made for tie-ins to street drainage in some way to try and alleviate water issues on abutting or nearby properties, that that would not be a part or conditional upon anything we're doing here. That would be a separate matter.
I will have to check on that.
I think we can get, excuse me.
Just not sure we have the authority to mandate that.
Um, I think that they, I think what we can do is, if this is, if this is going to work, if the elevations work, we can just talk to Mr. Gallagher, I mean, I'll know by, in two weeks. So we'll talk to Mr. Gallagher at the professional staff meeting, and see if he has any issues with it. In the past, I will tell you that the town has not had issues with homeowners tying it to drains. As long as you're meeting the DEP stormwater standards, for making sure the water's clean and the rates have run off, and, you know, we're just, I know it looks horrible in the pictures, but in a grand scheme of how much water's going into those pipes, it's not a lot. So I think we shouldn't have an issue with that, but we'll definitely have an answer for you by the next meeting.
Okay. I think that's kind of a big deal.
Yeah, I, I think to, to clarify, what Mr. Buckley said, that, that the amount of water's not a lot, it's not a lot compared to, you know, what those pipes can take.
Yeah. No, understood. Yeah. So, um, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of commentary in the, in the file, but a lot of people are here, so I'd just as soon let people have an opportunity to speak directly to the board, instead of reading each letter into the record. I mean, it's part of the record already, because it's in the file, but I'm open to-
And, and the board has read the letters, too.
Yes, we have read the letters. So, and there's, there's, there's physical evidence too, with photographs and things like that, that people have submitted, to show what the existing condition is in their yard or by their home. But I'm open to allowing anyone who'd like to start, just come up to the microphones, state your name and address, and let us know what you'd like to say.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Good evening.
You're welcome.
Can I just approach with, I can't put mine up on the screen, plot plan and pictures of the flooding?
Sure.
I'm sorry if it's a little repetitious, I don't know what else to say.
Sorry, Mrs. Wheeler, we can share. Mrs. Wheeler, yes, Mrs. Wheeler, yeah.
My name is Margaret Wheeler, I live at 8 Garfield Street, I'm the pool.
Yeah.
My house, forgive me if I have to look at my notes a little bit, my house was built in 1868, and it sits on the way back of the plot. It was also the Smalls Greenhouse for a century. We have pictures of the horse-drawn carriages, it's the character of the house. My in-laws bought it in 1967, my husband and I bought it in 1992 from them when I opened my accredited daycare. We've been foster parents, we've had kinship placements, we've just raised dozens of kids, and our play area's been there, our pool has been there, and it has just been a beautiful place where children thrive and they play. So this project will have a direct negative impact on my family and childcare and value of my home. It's going to be an eyesore, there will be noise. If you can picture your home being 30 feet from that, traffic may be a non-issue to some, but if your windows are open in your bedroom, even the dumpster pad is right next to that, people use their dumpster 24/7 in a bangs, whether cars are noisy in the families. Will be under our bedroom windows, and this is just not an urban dense area, this is a rectangle of woods surrounded by mostly family homes, whether they're condominiums or single-family homes. I know the Taylors of 12 R next to me, they're in Florida, they really wanted to be here. Hopefully, you got a letter from them. So even if it's not determined to be a wetland, and I certainly don't have the knowledge for that, it's definitely a high-water table. Like, our driveway has cracked multiple times in certain areas, because we're told there's a subterranean water flow underneath of it and high groundwater. There just seems to be a battle that we can't win, if you look at the pictures. There's even a good amount of flooding in the Briarwood property, there is an invasion of Japanese knot wood weed, I don't know if anybody's familiar with that, it's pretty horrible, and that's all flooded in there. Not all year long, and it has been worse, obviously, this year, but it still exists all the time. And whatever catch basins or plans there are, I'm still concerned that the backfill is going to be pushing water more into my yard and increasing that flooding, which, if you can see, it's pretty difficult. I thought when they put in the Glenwood condominiums, we were assured, and I don't know where that came from, this buffer would not be touched, you know, it's just a street, not even that much road frontage.
You mean, the land that they're talking about developing now, there was, you feel that they were, you were told that that would not be developed, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
That picture might help, if you could pull it up on his computer and show, so she can show you exactly where she's talking about.
Would you mind doing that?
Can...
Do you want me to show?
Can you, can you put it for... Yeah, that was helpful.
Which one do you want me to show?
The first one, that showed my pool.
Some of these shows are pool.
The color drawing.
There you go.
I don't know if you could just, but you're having your windows and your children playing there and all this coming up.
Then the lighting from the garages, you know, when I was listening to Bill talk about that, having my house set back so far, I'm a little concerned about the lighting on top of the noise. And the snow placement, like, if we see the water flooding there, if the snow placement is against that, that's obviously going to be melting more water into my yard.
Well, that was one of the concerns that we brought up as well, we had asked that the water, that the snow degraded to travel back onto the property.
Right. And the dumpster would probably be an easy fix, but the noise and the eyesore and the whole change of the dynamics to where my children are used to running free are, you know, can't be replaced. I think I have some daycare parents, a show of hands here. And there's several abutters in 100 feet, holes.
I'm willing to have an opportunity to speak as well, and not that this is going to totally put your mind at ease, but I can tell you this, that this board has had decades of time to say, "No lighting spill." So, any lighting that they put there will have to be shielded, so it's downlighting only, it will, it should not spill onto your property.
Well, if they're only going to be doing lighting in a doorway, then there's really...
Well, but by the garage, they could...
I wasn't aware that they were tearing down the original building, so I would just hope that there'd be a way to readjust the plans to move this thing closer to the street. Is it okay to ask them that, or can you...
It's fairly close to the street right now.
Did I hear you say the original 73 Main Street apartment building would be torn down?
Yes.
Yes.
Bill, what is the setback for the existing property versus what the proposed new is for Main Street?
The existing setback is about 45 feet off the street and 32 feet or 31 feet off the left side, as you're looking at it from the street. And the new one, the proposed layout is 52 feet from the front and 29 feet from the side.
So, only a few feet difference in the location of the front of the building?
We can only, the minimum is 50 feet. We're at 52, so we can't move it closer.
Well, it certainly would be lovely if it could be moved further away than 30 feet from my, back of my house. But thank you for hearing me, I know a lot of people want to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else like to speak, please?
Good evening, my name is Erica Dolan, I live at 17 Glenwood Avenue, which directly, I will be, I'm the, right here, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Just to address a couple of things that Mr. Buckley said, one of the things was saying that, and to quote, "The property is currently developed." That is correct, but less than half at this time is developed. So, where they're proposing the eight units, so this is the current, this is all woods, all of that is woods.
It's a building right here, right?
And that is the house, yes. And so, now, and these are the plans that I got from you guys at the town.
Right.
So, they're in the file. But to say that, and that he said that there's some grass area, it's not, it's, and you're going to do a site visit, so I'll spare you the time of showing you the photos, because you're going to see them in person, so I'll skip that. But it's, it's a small, narrow, very narrow area of woods.
Right.
You can share.
And they're shoving the eight townhouses vertically, like Tetris almost, in between the daycare and our house.
Whose house is this?
That, that's...
I'm just trying to orient.
That's my house.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, it's, and I think that Mr. Feroni's wonderful, he built my house, and I'm very grateful to have it, it's beautiful. So, it's nothing against him as a builder, because he does a phenomenal job. The issue that we collectively are taking is that when we purchased, and I've been, I'm active-duty military, and I haven't had a ton of time, but I was looking for the minutes, you brought up the minutes as well. Marjorie was at the meeting when Briarwood got our plot of land, and when we purchased, we were told that that woods, you're so lucky that you're buying that in the cul-de-sac, because no one can develop anywhere around you, and we thought, "This is wonderful, because we're getting these woods." So, in a good faith statement that was made, that that is not to be developed, and it's so tiny anyways to shove something in there. But Marjorie remembers at that meeting, Briarwood was told they can't build on that side, which is why my building was pushed further. So, if we can find those minutes, there is something in there that stated that they couldn't build on it, and now, once again...
That they couldn't, or that they were saying they wouldn't?
That, both were said. To us, in good faith, it was said that they couldn't, nobody can build here. But in the meeting, it was told that they wouldn't be able to. So, we need to find that, because it was said. So, also, to quote Mr. Buckley, he said, you know, "They're using that plot of land that Mike already owns to make up the land for this big building to be shoved in there," but that land was part of originally our home, where our house, you know, our woods. So, we are also concerned about the stormwater runoff, especially if they're going to put this five-foot retaining wall and then have some space in between, where then they're going to put the arbivites. And that's a concern, because we already have flooding, and when our house was built, Briarwood promised that there would be drainage into basins, Briarwood gave us the same system. That system doesn't work very well, because the neighbor behind us has a complete lake in their backyard now, because of my house. Of course, I didn't, I had no part of that, but it, their system doesn't work, so perhaps this new one might work better. I'm not an expert on that. But, so we're concerned about that, and, yeah, it's really just a primary concern that they're shoving in a tiny area, this big eight-unit thing. We're only six, and we have way more room, way more room. So, I mean, maybe to Marjorie's point, even if they were able to do, like, where the existing house is now, why can't they go horizontal and build four? Beautiful four units, or six even, this way. Why does it have to go that way? And why does it have to take up so much of our woodlands? And no, we don't have any creatures in there besides, you know, the foxes and the coyotes and the regular things, there's nothing endangered.
I said my coyotes to you?
We do have a lot of coyotes. And I did talk to the Conservation Commission, Foxborough, and they did say that it is not wetlands, the closest wetlands is Offlet, but it is very wet. It is full of water. So, again, a legitimate concern is when that wall is put in, it's going to just create a further issue. And again, it is going to be a noise issue, and it is going to be an eyesore. Nobody wants to even, why would you want to live, you know, facing her and then facing up? There's no privacy. So, thank you for your time, sorry to be redundant.
No, you're totally fine, thank you.
Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Well, Army or Navy, because...
Oh, no, oh.
You're wearing it.
She only bought the sweatshirt.
No, no.
Are you Army?
Yeah.
Oh.
I will tell you, my friends are Army, but my dad is Navy.
That person, that person is a squid, we know that.
Okay, my dad was a squid. But he went to West Point, just saying, sorry, Bill.
Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Saurav Banerjee, I live in the same community as Erica, I live on 17 Glenwood Ave., Unit A. So when I purchased the property like 18 months back, same thing was told to me, like, the woodland would not be developed into any properties, so it's like a shock to me, like, all of a sudden, a new project comes up, and they're planning to develop that piece of land. So I don't want to take too much time, but whatever concerns are raised, I do have the same concerns, noise, greenery will be lost, and there may be water runoff issues, yeah. So I just wanted to bring them up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is hard. I grew up in the house that Margie currently lives in.
Can you just say your name and your address?
Shaleen Hobel, 6 Garfield Street, I live right in her front yard, all the visuals gone. I've lived there since I was 13 years old, long time. This eight-unit monster, it's too big, it's just too big. Three would be four maximum, eight is ridiculous, it's like building the Foxborough Company right in our backyards. It's not going to enhance, it's not going to improve our property value. We've always had a water table problem, it's not a runoff problem, it's the water table. I would show you, the far end of the property going directly back, there's a huge boulder there, so I don't know if we're on ledge, I don't know, I don't know why we always have so much water there, but it is a problem, and building other stuff on top of it isn't going to help.
So does it affect you right now that the existing, that there's an existing six-family there, or not so much?
It's a small house, that's, it's old, too, so it fits in right now. They do have a light that shines right in my bedroom window, though, and Margie's living is on the second floor, the daycare is on the bottom floor, so all the lighting is, a six-foot fence isn't going to block the lighting from her living quarters. I just, I just hope that you just convince them to just downsize it, it's just way too big, it does not fit in with the neighborhood. It's going to decrease our property value, it's just really losing sleep upsetting.
Thank you.
As an FYI, for those who asked, 17 Glenwood was opened May 9, 2019, and was closed October 24, 2019. All of the minutes are on our website.
From what month to what month?
May 9, 2019 to October 24, 2019. They weren't discussed at every meeting, some were continued, but...
Gosh, that was quick.
Anyone else in the audience have questions, concerns, please?
I have to say, you were all very well spoken.
Hello, my name's John Kackludis, I live at 6 Michelle's Way, and my grandson, Monty, attends...
Mrs. Wheeler's.
...to Margie's daycare.
Yes.
So, it's my understanding, and just listening to the description of the property and Margie's comments, is that this development will have a direct impact on the playground area, okay? And what I wanted to just talk about really today are the benefits of a playground for children. So, excuse me while I read this. So, Margie's daycare outdoor yard playground area provides enormous benefits to the development of the children who attend. Margie's outdoor playground gives the kids opportunities to grow, not only physically, but also enhances their cognitive, social, emotional growth. The obvious physical benefits that happen in Margie's outdoor playground area include large motor skill development, while helping kids stay active and physically healthy as a result. Margie's outdoor playground gives kids a place to make discoveries and get creative, inspired through playing outside with each other. Thanks to Margie's outdoor playground area, kids have an opportunity to learn about the physical world through swinging, running, playing in the grass, the sand, all with each other, having lots of fun. Using the outdoor playground area at Margie's daycare, the kids develop their cognitive skills by using the play equipment to problem-solve while navigating the slides, swings, climbing gear in the outdoor play area. This is where the kids can pretend and develop their communication and comprehensive skills, building their confidence in the process. Last but not least are the emotional and social benefits the kids experience in Margie's outdoor playground area, where positive self-esteem and confidence blossoms. To sum up, Margie's outdoor playground area is essential to the physical, cognitive, social, and emotional development of the children attending. of the children attending her program. The many children attending Margie's daycare over the years experienced these benefits. Future children attending the program will depend on it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Mark White. I'm at Two Fields Stone Road in Foxborough. My two daughters go to, have been going to Margie's daycare for the last five years. John hit on a lot of things, so I don't want to be redundant. I also want to thank you all for your time and service to the town. To sum up a couple of things, and John mentioned a lot of it, Margie, to call her a childcare provider is like not doing it justice. She's like family, basically. She, I think, a really important note to point out, she goes out of her way to serve children of all socioeconomic needs. I've seen countless cases where she goes above and beyond, where she needs to, to make sure that the environment's right for the kids and that she can help as many people as she can. To do what, to sum up what she does, she creates magic. It's amazing. It's not what you get at every childcare, every daycare. And all of that happens outside. My wife and I, we were joking yesterday. We sent our little three-year-old Grace to Margie's with new shoes. And we like, because you never send her to new shoes, because she'd go outside, they play in the mud, they jump in the mud, and the shoes get ruined. So like, we were like, ah, there goes that pair of shoes. But like, in the best way possible, like the absolute best way possible. Our kids love it. Our girl has hundreds, if not thousands, of kids that thrive at Margie's. Again, just to echo, sum up kind of quick, I believe this development have a negative impact on the daycare and on the kids. The construction alone, just the, it's not a, it's a pretty significant construction project, I would imagine. The development alone, I think, would prevent the ability for the kids to be outside and to be themselves. Never mind the development itself. If you looked at where it was, it seemed as if about three to four of the units would overlook directly into the yard. And like, big privacy and safety concerns on my behalf as a parent of somebody with a child there. I know that the arborvitae's would be there, but those take ten years or so to grow in fully, and it's going to be raised up, so that, like, there's a lot of different factors there. Dumpster, again, would be a big concern. Eyesore, the flooding, all that stuff. I also, I just wanted to look, I looked at the, tried to look at the plan as best I could before I came in. The three-bedroom, I know it was mentioned, the three-bedroom on the application. Then I saw later, like, later in the plans, it was two. But then I think there's a loft with a door upstairs. So I'm just a little curious as to that. Is it really trying to be a three-bedroom? And we're just trying to have that. So I, just a couple of concerns there with septic issues, and I know that I'm trying not to overstep. But, and then character of the neighborhood. That, it, all the other neighbors hit on that, but this definitely impacts the character of the neighborhood, just as someone goes in there every day. But again, just, I can hope the planning board takes into consideration the impact the development would have on all the surrounding neighbors, in particular, Margie's daycare. And thank you for your deliberation and time.
Thank you.
Anybody else before we move along? Yes, sir.
My name is, sorry. My name is Mike Kaminski. I live at Eighteen Winter Street. But I am a friend of Mrs. Sinclair at Seventy-Five Main Street. And she wrote an email to you folks, and I hope you take it into consideration, as you said you would. She's a lady with the lake, and the lake has two ducks. So there is additional wildlife in back. There have been many projects, Jack Othelatway and Glenn Deal, that have affected her property due to the flooding. It can be, you can say it's a high-water table or something. But bottom line is, and people have said it here earlier tonight, they were given the impression things would improve. They did not improve. And I think the pictures that Mrs. Sinclair sent to you show that. Yes, we've had record rain this month, but it's still not even, it's still just breaking the top ten. So please, take everything into consideration. You know, the, again, you're hearing about three bedrooms and the character of the neighborhood. If you go farther up the character of the neighborhood, it's single houses. You know, up until you get up into the gas station and, you know, that area, and the Roofing Company. So just please, take into the character of the neighborhood when you consider this. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one last comment. It was said that she was stonewalling. She reached out to Mike a few days ago. And so she's not stonewalling. People know how to get a hold of her.
I didn't say stonewalling. I said Mr. Ferroni tried to get a hold of her and hadn't heard back. So I didn't use that term.
Understood.
Yeah. So Mr. Weinfeld, if you don't mind, I'd like to address a couple of the issues very briefly.
Please.
While it's all fresh in everybody's mind. So density seems to be, you know, an issue. What I want to point out is, in the R-15 zone, almost all of the multifamily, it's built in the R-15 zone in Foxborough in the past fifty years, around thirty thousand square foot lots. Some are on forty thousand, maybe the later ones. These lots are all, this lot is about sixty-seven thousand square feet. So when we talk about how tiny the lot is, et cetera, you know, it's much bigger than it's been. And I'm not sure anybody would be complaining about the quality of the most of the multifamilies we see in our, our community here. It is townhouse construction. So yeah, if you wanted two or three-story apartment buildings, that's another different kind of construction. This is meant to be ownership. People owning a home, which, in my opinion, there's nothing wrong with renting, but in my opinion, I think it's more desirable to have people living in town that own the community. And you can drive by, look, I live here. Duplexes, you can drive duplexes on Beech Street, Willow Street, Moore Street, that are, you could tell they're rentals. Okay, I'm just telling you, you could tell they're rentals. So I think it's important what you have, when you have ownership. Now, you can't require that. It's not within your purview. But that's where they're meant to be, and that's what Seventeen Glenwood went. And again, we'll look at all those issues that you brought up, which is, see if we can help with drainage problems. And then I jotting down some other notes that I'm not going to share with you, because I have to deal with my client and stuff. But we'll certainly be ready to come back in a couple of weeks after we talk to the town's professional staff, after we digested this. And we'll come back with some thoughts for your consideration, some modifications.
And when you come back, I don't want to put you on the spot about the loft. I would like to.
Oh, the loft. So somebody said that the door, there's no door on the plan. You have the plans.
Yeah, there's no door, there's no closets.
Right, there's no doors, no closets. So probably, everybody wants, during COVID now, everybody wants a room for their
Home office.
Work from. Right, so that's what that's designed for. There's no closets, there's no doors. When would you like to do the sidewalk?
We got posted.
On a dry day?
Hey, I got special booths for the site.
FYI, Bob Cutler doesn't like me when I post sidewalks. So sidewalks are observational only, as long as no discussions take place. You guys can do it whenever you want.
Okay.
So we don't have to make a decision now. You can just tell me what you want, once you've coordinated and we've watched the weather. Because I'm not walking.
I can send a poll to see what's people's availability, so that we can schedule it.
Thank you.
If you can, it's going to take us a little bit to survey markers out. So if you can give us, maybe not next week, but maybe next Saturday, if you want to do it Saturday, or the week after.
We could do it Saturday. That'd be good, because I'm going on business trip on the eighth. I'd like to see it. Or I could get a personal sidewalk.
Yeah, I would be certainly glad to do multiple sidewalks to work around your schedule. It means it's easy for me.
So you're considering next Saturday?
If you give us next week, if you give us next week to, because we got to get the surveyors out there.
I was looking at the weather. It's actually supposed to be nice.
Oh, my gosh, put the weather away.
All right, let's do it.
It's supposed to be nice.
The thirteenth, the sixth?
The sixth.
Six? Will you let us know what time, Gabby?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Gabby, do we have that staff meeting scheduled yet?
Tracy's going to buy us breakfast afterwards.
Sure, I'm sorry.
Do we have that staff meeting scheduled yet?
The seventeenth.
Then there's plenty of time.
Yeah, we're in a hurry. So we're going to take the time necessary.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Continue.
Continue, sorry. I always get the wrong, for the public hearing, Special Permit Seventy-three Main Street, construction of an eight-unit multifamily dwelling, Briarwood Construction Corp., until?
It would be April twenty-fifth, right? Because we're not having a town. The next meeting's the eleventh, so.
Twenty-fifth.
So April twenty-fifth, we could do seven-twenty.
Okay, April twenty-fifth, seven-twenty.
Second.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much.
So it being sometime past eight PM, we continue public hearing, definitive subdivision Ridge Road, M-35P, oh-oh-six and oh-oh-seven. Construction of a proposed four-lot subdivision, is that right?
No.
No, that's last.
No.
Twelve, we're reading the wrong one.
I am reading the wrong one.
This is why I'm the clerk. Construction of a proposed twelve-lot subdivision, Pine Air LLC.
Sorry, thank you.
You're welcome.
Twelve lots?
That's a lot.
Get it.
Okay.
More than eight.
Mr. Buckley, Mr. Spillane, good evening.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group, and I'm here representing Pine Air Estates, or Pine, yeah, Pine Air LLC. And with me this evening is Frank Spillane. Spillane Spillane is attorney of record. So let me put this up on the screen.
You've got all the plans tonight. I got nothing.
Diana doesn't like you.
Them two could have had, they had to share.
Oh, well, we kind of matched tonight, so.
Leave it on me. I'm the one that prepared the packets.
We have no problem with that.
What happened?
If you can bear with me for a second, I got kicked out. I've got to log back in. So. Sorry.
Oh, I'm away. Yeah, I'm in the Outer Banks. I will not be here on the twenty-fifth.
I already have you down. Let's not be in here.
Thank you. I'll be in the Outer Banks. You do not want me calling in.
You can watch the tape afterward.
Yeah, we don't with your seventeen girlfriend.
Do I need to mullins in on Thirty, I have a note, Thirty Thirty-two, as he's getting signed in, Wall Street. Remember, they were going to come before us, before the holiday, and then they didn't. I think I need to mullins in on that.
I don't think, I don't think they, in February, they continued.
Oh, okay. Then I'm thinking of something else. How you doing there, Bill? I'm saving.
Yeah, logging on. Okay, here we go. I was at a meeting, I was at a hearing in Sharon, over in Walpole. And I did, they don't have this. Right, so I'm so used to this now, so I brought my boards. And I was in a hurry. Actually, it was Thursday night before Army-Navy, and all my friends had come in. So I said, I got to go to this hearing. So I grabbed my stuff, I went over there. I put my board out, and it was for a project in, like, Newton.
That's awesome.
Like, well, I'm just going to talk about this.
Tracy, you might want to check if you were here October twenty-sixth. That was the first hearing of Thirty Thirty-two Wall Street.
I'm getting a lot of homework out of this. Twenty-sixth?
October twenty-sixth. That was when it opened.
Thank you. Yeah.
He's trying to log in. He might be just talking about this now.
Yeah, so let's see. What is going on? Oh, here we go. All right, now I'm going to share my screen. Here we go. Go, a different one right here. And here we go. So this is the rendering, this is the drawing that I actually gave you a copy of. And what this just is, is a rendering of the site. I think everybody's very familiar with the property. It is, this is a seventeen-point-three-acre parcel of land. It's actually three separate assessor's boxes. It's across on E Street. As you're looking to the north, this is to the tops. That's back toward the center of Foxborough. And the bottom is south, which is toward Mansfield. This is Brookside Drive, over here on the opposite side of it. So this is a, as I stated, it's seventeen-point-three acres. The land is about three hundred feet of frontage along E Street, and it's probably about twelve-hundred-and-fifty feet deep. The, let's see. It currently contains an existing single-family home, and it has accessory buildings with it, you know, sheds. I think there's a little garage, there's a pool on there. That will all be removed as, as part of this project. And I know this has been before the board passed. This is a very different, I mean, I think it's a very different design. I mean, when you look at it like this, it's pretty much the same. It's twelve lots, it's about, you know, a thousand feet of roadway. But as far as the layout of it, some of the engineering details, it's a different beast. This is much more of a conventional type of system. But the lot does lie within the R-40 zoning district, as you can imagine. But it also lies partially within the town's future aquifer zone, which is a kind of a, in a mean way, made-up zone that was made up back in the eighties. And it kind of follows the Canoe River area down in that area. But it is also a primary resource area, falls under our zonings, which is like a zone two. And the reason for that is, is because if you're within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of a body of water, which this is, it can support fish life, it's considered a primary resource area. So that kicks in like sixty thousand square foot lots. And in an OSID, it's thirty thousand square foot lots. Which leads me to the next thing. This project is being permitted under an open-space residential development. And I'll talk about that later, why I think this is a good fit for an open-space residential development. And one of the things also, and mainly because of its location in relationship to other open spaces owned by the county and owned by the town. So the site is, as you can see, the Canoe River comes from the north to south. And along E Street, it's about elevation, one-hundred-and-seventy-five feet above sea level. It drops down toward the Canoe River, about five feet-ish. And then it starts to rise again to the back, to about elevation two-hundred-and-twenty-eight. So it's a fairly significant rise from the Canoe River to the back. And that's going to connect into some of the things I'm going to talk about. So the proposed roadway, as you can see on the drawing here, it's about a thousand twenty-four feet. It's twelve lots. It's an open-space residential development. E Street, just for, we were just talking about traffic earlier, just to put in the back of your mind, E Street has about sixty-three hundred cars per day. So it's nowhere near Main Street, which we were just talking about, which is sixteen thousand, but it still has a decent traffic flow through that area. We talked about the fact that it's an OSID, but we're also asking to permit it, special permit, under the innovative residential development. And that allows the commission or the board to allow a roadway more than eight-hundred-foot dead end. And that was, it's a relatively new bylaw put in, I don't know, maybe five, six, seven years ago. So the, this is a standard roadway. It serves twelve lots, and it's been designed under the new subdivision regulations, which you did not, which you approved not too long ago. The roadway itself is twenty-four feet wide. It has granite curbing on both sides. It has a sidewalk on one side. And in this particular case, because, I know people are familiar with it, when you come in off of the street, it drops down significantly, and that's, you hit a bank, and it goes up significantly. So what we're trying to do is, because of the location of the lot, which is right against the lot line, we don't have the luxury of grading off toward the lot line. And we also don't have the luxury of grading off toward the river. Because one of the things we wanna do is minimize the impact on the river, which means we don't wanna fill any water regitated wetlands. We will be filling an isolated wetland, and we also will be filling a, what's called bordering land, subject to flooding, which in our layman term is floodplain, you know, the flood zones. We've been before the conservation with our initial meeting, and this is our initial meeting with you. So, this roadway will be coming in, and will be, have a slight decrease, and then a six percent grade going up. And the six percent grade is the maximum grade allowed under the town bylaws. We're not asking for a waiver for that. But again, it does require us to put some retaining walls over on the right side, as you look at it, as you're coming in off of E Street. The left-side retaining wall has to do with holding it up. So, when you, if you picture this, you're coming in off of E Street, the wall on the left, you're dropping. So the wall on the left, and then you're dropping down to the grade. The wall on the right, for maybe half the distance, maybe about a hundred feet or so, you're dropping. But then now you're starting to cut into that bank, so now the wall is holding that bank back. So it's a drop, and then holding the bank back on the right side as you come in. One of the waivers we're asking for is that the Board, in this portion of the site, the Board will allow us to not put in a grass strip. And the reason for that is, is because we wanna have the roadway, we'll put in a vertical granite curb, and then we'll put in the five-foot sidewalk, and then the wall. We're trying to minimize the amount of impact in the floodplain, and the amount of impact in that isolated wetland area. And if, to give you some idea, what is, what am I talking about? If you think about Lawson Farms, if you've driven in there lately, we had that wetland crossing, where we built the bridge, and the Board at that time, we don't have grass strips, it's not built yet, but we don't have grass strips in there, it's just a road and a sidewalk on the left side, right up against it. So, if you can't picture, that's the kind of scenario we're looking at there. Once we get past it, you know, it's approximately, I have the number here, it's about two-hundred-and-thirty, two-hundred-and-fifty feet. Then we'll go back to a normal layout. So you'll have twenty-four-foot road, you'll have a five-foot grass strip or so, and then you'll have the five-foot sidewalk on the left side. The utilities will be underground, of course, standard, served by municipal water, on-site septic on the site. One of the things that I wanted to discuss is, when I'm talking about water, the, if you read the town bylaw, as far as that, you know, innovative, some, innovative section of the bylaw, innovative development, it says that you should not have a dead-end water line, you should loop it. The town, the water, so, the, one of the previous designs had actually a looped within the road, and the D P W said, no, that, that's not, that doesn't work, it's actually worse than it. So, what we've done here is, we've shown the, just one water line up to the end. But at the end here, if you take a look on lots five and seven, whichever are on the right side at the end, we're showing a water easement to connect over to the property to the south. Because we, our understanding is, is there's been preliminary discussions with the owner of that property to create a residential development. So we're, we're gonna bring our water line to the end of that property there. We showed it, Mr. Gallagher wants it brought right to the end, fine, we'll bring it right to the property line. So if someday anybody builds over there, they can loop their water line through too. So we're making provision to have a loop, but we're not looping it now, and that's because of what the D P W has told us. The stormwater is gonna be managed by a conventional system, and by conventional, I mean, it's catch basins, manholes, to an above-ground infiltration basin. I think one of the previous designs, they had quite a bit of low-impact development, or, you know, which had rain gardens, bio-retention areas, and open swales. And the D P W said, yeah, we don't, we don't like that. And I don't blame them, it's hard to maintain. And open, this, this type of system, you get good water quality, and you get good infiltration back into the ground, which is important in a water resource district, and it's easy to maintain. If the basin starts to get silted up, which they will, you can go in there with a bobcat or a backhoe, and scrape it out and be done. It's very difficult to do with these other types of systems. So, stormwater will be managed by the system. Down right here is the stormwater basin, so it's on Lot Two, which is this lot here. Let me zoom in a little bit. I'm not gonna. So, and that again, that is another waiver that we're, we're asking the Board to consider, which is to waive the requirement that a drainage basin has to be fifty feet from all structures. You can see in this particular case, you know, we're dealing with a cluster subdivision. So the idea is to minimize these lot sizes, so instead of a sixty thousand square-foot lot here, I have a thirty thousand. But I have to put the basin here, unfortunately, it has to go in the low area, that's just the way it is. And I can't go deeper, because I can't mess with the wetlands and the floodplain. So it's pretty much here, so we're asking the Board to consider to allow this house to be closer to fifty feet on this particular lot. And again, Joe Homeowner will know what he's getting into when he buys it. It's not like it's going to be a secret, it's gonna be an open basin.
That's the biggest lot, that thirty-eight thousand lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you, could you flip the house in the driveway?
I absolutely could do that. I don't, you know, we show these houses because it's a requirement of the bylaw to give you, like, an idea of what fits. I have no idea what I would leave. And, yeah, that's a great point. The good thing about showing a house like that is that the southern exposure's on the house. So you're getting the sun all day. If I put the garage on that side, you know, you're wasting the southern exposure. So it just depends on what the guy wants to do, or, or, actually, it's definitely the gal, what she wants to do.
So how much road would that leave you, presumably draining down to E Street?
It is, we're draining two-hundred-and-twenty-three feet to E Street. So what we do in that particular case is, at the entrance, at the bottom of the hill, we have a set of catch basins, and they, they are gonna be going directly into a culvert. So underneath, I'm gonna, I'll show it to you in a minute. So what we have here, this wall has, has a culvert underneath it. The culvert is not there to, for flow, there's no flow there. The reason for the culvert is to allow wildlife to pass back and forth through there. Yeah, you, I know, but there's a conservation issue.
No, it's like the pedestrian bridge at Patriot Place.
Wildlife can go underneath there, plus it allows, it's an equalization thing. So we have an isolated wetland that we're partially filling. If we, if we don't put something to allow the water to go back and forth, then you have the potential to dry up the wetland to the right.
Yep.
So that's what the purpose of this is, it's a four-by-four culvert, and it's just to provide wildlife passage, and it's to provide equalization of water when the water comes up from the river. Each house will have its own roof drain system, very standard, you've seen it a million times, it's a requirement of the bylaw. So each road, house has a roof drain system, and it will be, you know, whatever they wanna be. Sometimes they, we wanna use pits, we, we show the plastic chambers, as long as they can infiltrate the two-inch storm, we don't care what they use. And that's up to the designer of the septic. Again, we're waiting for the PA review from Western Exampson, we expect it within, not next week, but the weekend after. And we'll make modifications that they recommend, and then we'll be back before the Board. And with changes, but they say, whatever comments we receive from the Board tonight, and whatever comments we receive from neighbors. So, one of the things that is, I know is very important, is was brought up to me, and I'm gonna get out of this, and if I could ask you to go to sheet two-point-one. You can go to sheet two-point-one on your plan set. And I'm gonna go to sheet two-point-one on here.
Can I ask you a question as you're pulling that up?
Yes.
Private or public road?
Public, we're going to ask for it to be public. And if you recall, my understanding is, is one of the major reasons that D P W do not want it to be a public road is they were not going to maintain a bridge. There's, we don't have a bridge anymore, we just have a regular road with walls. And they weren't gonna maintain all of those rain gardens and bio-retention areas that I was talking about. This is just a basin, which is what they're used to maintaining.
Okay.
So we would be asking town meeting, we would be asking this Board to recommend a town meeting, for it to be public way at that, at that point.
Okay, thank you.
So, what I'd like you to point, I'm gonna zoom in on this area and show you. So this is the road coming in, and you see how it's kind of odd here?
No, I don't think we're seeing the same thing you're seeing.
Oh, it's not, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm like, gosh, if you can see that road, you're darn good.
I know, let me stop the share and reshare here. Okay. There we go, okay. So, so you can see the road right here, see how it's coming in? And, you know, it's not the normal nice fifty-foot loop and stuff. So I've, I've notched it out right here. So this is the road, and I've notched it out, and I've provided seventy feet of frontage along Mr. Hunt's property line. So it provides seventy feet of frontage on a road, which someday, hopefully, will be a public way. But in any case, it'll be a private way, and he will be allowed to tie into it. This was told to me by my client, and Mr. Bottomley, and he said, you know, this is what we're going to do it this way. I said, you know, whatever you wanna do, you're, it's your project.
Well, it's okay, 'cause we were gonna tell you, he had to do it anyway. Because it's been, you're right, it has been an important issue, because there's a history here, where Mr. Hunt had access through an easement for, I don't know, years, decades, whatever it is. And for him to be cut off, them doing the subdivision, would just have been improper, so.
Yep.
So let me also point out that we're not gonna cut off that access.
Right.
That gravel road will stay. So if you wanna keep using the gravel road, fine, you know, but you're gonna be, have, you're gonna have access.
But we just wanted, we wanted to avoid the fact that he was gonna have to go a mile out of his way to come back in to get to his land.
Right.
Which is, was, was out there for a while, so.
I'd like you to go to sheet three-point-one, if you would, please. And again, I'm zooming up on that area. And I know it's hard to see, but if you kind of follow my hand, you can see this is the existing dirt drive, gravel drive, comes in here, this is the split, there's the split right there.
Right, yep.
This goes to Barbados, this goes to Hunt's, so here's the drive.
Yep.
And what we're showing here is a twelve-foot paved driveway from the new road to the property line that would connect into where the existing gravel driveway is. So if somebody chose to access it off the new road, they could just come in and.
Take a ride.
Pull into the gravel driveway. So that was another item. And then let me, one more, if you go to sheet four-point-one, I'm sorry to take you on this magical mystery ride here. So sheet four-point-one.
Yep.
What we're, and what we've been told here to do is, we're also bringing the underground utilities, which is electric in this particular case, and the water service will also be brought to the property line to be used if they chose to hook in. So, I'll have access to town water off the new main, and electric, underground electric, off of the underground electric service, whatever that happens to me.
That's on sheet four-point-one.
Sheet four-point-one, yes.
I could.
Screw that up, sorry.
Four-point-one. There's two four-point-ones.
There's two four-point-ones.
What can that be?
I guess I labeled them wrong.
No, that's fine, now, now I'm on the right one, so that's okay.
It's the first four-point-one, so let me make a note of that.
So now I can see what you're, how you're, how you're showing it, I guess.
So, so, so the utilities, so the driveway will be brought in, the water will be brought in, and the underground electric will be brought in, no charge. And, and access to that road will be allowed, even while it's a private road. So that is Mr. Bottomley's commitment to this Board, and in writing, put it in writing, Frank, and put something together, however you wanna handle that.
Okay.
So let me go back, stop and share again, let me go back to, to, I wanna show you a, as I mentioned earlier, this is a, this is a open space. So, part of this is we have to donate at least forty-five percent of the development to the town. And I wanted to show you why I think this is actually a really great feature of the project. So this is actually the town's open-space map, and I, I stole it. And the green, the green here, the light green and the dark green, this is land owned by the Conservation Commission and by Norfolk County. So, this is like a Canoe River greenbelt here. So, this is our parcel down here, I've just kind of overlaid it, so you can see how it fits. So, the, the river, which isn't shown on this, unfortunately, comes in north and south, like my hand is showing it. And we're giving the area of the floodplain and the wetlands, and then as you start going up around the subdivision, this is all upland. And you can see how it connects into this, it connects perfectly. So it will provide people who want to access this land, they'll be able to drive up this new road. And it's not shown on this plan, but the Conservation Commission asked us, and I'll show you in a moment. We, we had no access to the open space that we're donating from our project. So Mr. Bodie, the commission said, we would like access from the new road, we said, fine.
Yeah, Lawson too, didn't we?
Yeah, I think we had the exact same discussion.
Yeah, Lawson, you gave the developer the option of thirty thousand bucks to the town, or give them access. And, and they've already made a decision, which I'm not gonna tell you over here, but I think you'll be happy. I think everybody will be happy. So the, so what we, so I just wanted to show you this, this is the, the land that we're gonna be divide, gonna be.
Donating.
Yeah, donating to the town. So let me go back again. Share the screen again. So this is what I was talking about, this is the open-space lot all around the outside, ties in in the back here. And this is where we're gonna put the ten-foot path, which is what the conservation asked for between these two lots.
Got it.
I went through the special permit criteria, it's late, I'm not going to read it again. You can look at it on here, unless you wanna ask me about it during the discussion. And I think I'm gonna stop right there, Mr. Chairman.
Any concern about people parking at the end of the cul-de-sac to walk?
There's always that. And, but, you know what, that's, that's, that's the developer's problem, it's his issue. If he's going to allow that access point, then, and the commission wants it.
Even without the access point, though, there has been a history in town with, not just that, but the two homes at the very end, because they're right by that.
All right.
To cheat over and start to use that green space for personal use. So that's, again, it's not gonna be, you know, our headache, it's, you know, the conservation will have to watch it, and/or the developer will have to watch it.
Because if people start parking around there, it's gonna be tough to flip emergency vehicles. That's just what I'm thinking.
Yeah. Bill, is there a way they're gonna do that, are you gonna make the trip?
We're gonna go there.
A corridor as part of the donation?
Yes. So, what, what, I don't know if you ever walked behind, you know where the cemetery is on Cross Street? The State Hospital Cemetery?
Yeah.
We created a walking path from there all the way back.
Yes.
Right?
Neff Drive.
Yep.
Yep.
So we created that, that walking path through Hylon Farm.
Yeah.
And what we did there is, he brought in a little bobcat, and it had a thing, and he just cleared like a three or five, four-foot path, and just cleaned it out, and he put wood chips down.
Yeah, wood.
And that's it. And what we'll do here is the same thing, and one of the things we do, and the commission, I didn't bring it up to you, but if you look at the plan set, like the first couple of pages, sheets two-one and two-two, you'll see on the property corners, where we're, where we're near the open space, where it's a property corner of the open space, we're putting in concrete bounds, plus we're putting in six-by-six fence posts that stick up four feet, that have tags on them. So.
It'll be an indicator.
Yeah, and some people will definitely, look, if somebody's gonna, if somebody's gonna cheat, they're gonna cheat.
Yes, you can't control.
But this is, this will take the person who really just doesn't know, hey, this is the conservation land, don't go, don't go there.
Yeah, but in this case, this is gonna be conservation land, not an easement over private property.
Right.
Right.
It's gonna be a right-of-way, ten feet, no easement, yes, I understand what you're saying.
That's a good point.
And we'll put those posts. And we'll put those posts. And actually, it's up to Mr. Bodie, what we did on River Ridge is we put a gate. I don't think it's, I don't think we need a gate, but
Whatever.
That's his call.
That's up to them. If you were to consider what Tracy was talking about on Lot 2, and flopping that pond, that means you would be sending more drainage down to East Street, right?
I think what Tracy meant, I think what Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong, you were asking if we could flip the house.
Flip the house.
Yeah, not the pond.
Yeah, we're not going to flip the pond.
I'm not flipping the pond.
We'll put it into the
I'm just wondering if we can put the, the driveway on the left side of the house.
My bad, I misunderstood.
Yeah, we don't want to, yeah, we don't want to.
You're right, yeah.
Well, no, we have to give a waiver. Will you still need a waiver if it was flipped?
Yes.
Okay.
We can't, the lot's tiny.
Okay.
It'll be the homeowner's call, really.
Yeah, no.
I mean, if you look at like, um, before you put, well, that's not true. That's not true. I was just thinking of where you live. So you have the homeowner at the end of, is it Weston?
The yellow house?
The one at the very end on the cul-de-sac, he has a pond in his backyard. And then there's a, where the street that you live, there's a pond
Behind me.
Or one of those yards, yeah.
Yeah.
So you just, you just know it.
And, and just to the OSRB, is it that the minimum lot size is 30, or is it the aggregate minimum lot size is 30? Because you've got a 24,000 square foot lot.
So if you're within 250 feet of the river, you fall within the primary resource area. And you have to have a 30,000 square foot lot. If you're more than 250 feet away from the river, you're not in a primary resource area, so you only need a 20,000 square foot lot. That's how that goes.
All these things you'll learn. Where does this basin fall in relationship to the no disturb?
It is, so the basin falls within the, um, under the, what lands, under the Wellands Protection Act, they have what's called a river frontier area. So anything within 200 feet of the river bank is river frontier area. And it's not a buffer zone, it's river frontier area, it's considered a resource area. So this is well within it, I mean, a big chunk of it. But the Wellands Protection Act recognizes the fact that water flows downhill. And so stormwater elements have to be down by the river. So we don't, we, when we are calculating how much alteration takes place within a river frontier area, we can only alter up to 10% of the area. But you don't have to count drainage. And the other thing that you're missing down here is, if you go to sheet 5.5, a lot of mitigation down there. So we're putting, we're putting plants down there, we're restoring wetlands. We're scooping out some of that bank to put in, um, to compensate for the flood plain that we're filling. And again, none of that counts. So really, the only alteration that counts under the Wetlands Protection Act is the road itself, the wall. And any activity within lots 2 and 4, which are those two lots on the left
Yeah.
that are within 200 feet of the river.
In the river frontier.
So that's the stuff that we have to deal with, with the Conservation Commission, which we are dealing with them.
Anyone in the audience who has liked to stand up and comment or question?
Mr. Weinfeld, there's a memo from, uh, Mr. Gallagher, the DPW director, that was submitted. We are also, um, will review this project with staff.
Also on the 17th.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr., just before you start, Mr. Gallagher writes, Department of Public Works to review the submitted documents for the proposed subdivision 204 East Street dated February 1, 2024 with the following comments. Number one, stormwater management. We understand Weston and Sampson is performing peer review for the purpose of proposed stormwater management system of note should be the ACEC for the Canoe River Aquifer. Number two, water main slash easement, with the potential of another subdivision being designed from Abbey Lane, the water main should be installed to the end of the easement shown on Lot 5 and 7. This will allow developer for the Abbey Lane project to complete the water main loop. Water service for Lot 5 should be relocated to the house side of the eight-inch main stub in the easement. Number three, water fees. The water service fee will be paid by the developer prior to installation of each service. The $2,100 service fee includes the water department staff tapping the water main and installing a one-inch line to the property line ending at a curb stop. Developers required to provide safe access to the water main and trench excavation to the property line. LTPPP, which I don't know what that means, please provide the LTPPP for review. And mail kiosk, while the mail kiosk and pattern installed within the right-of-way, the town will not be responsible for any maintenance repairs or future replacement.
That's the long-term pollution prevention plan?
Oh, yeah, pollution prevention plan, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Gabby saved the day again.
Right. Sorry, sir.
That's okay. Tom Hunt, 206 East Street, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you people. Have many questions. Is, is this going to be a limited project?
You need to talk to the chairman.
Limited project?
I'll have to ask Mr. Buckley. Will it be a limited project?
Um, yes.
Okay, the, um,
That's a Wetland Protection Act issue, by the way.
The Foxborough Conservation established in a Superior Court case victory against Mass DEP that the landowner is not entitled to limited project status because he already has access to his home via a shared easement.
You?
Yes. That's, that's Superior Court ruling. The town of Foxborough took DEP to court when they overthrew the, uh, the denial of Forge Estates in 2015. And that's a Superior Court ruling that he does not have limited projects, project status.
How's that affect your project if he doesn't have limited project status?
There's no project. But that's a decision made by the Conservation Commission, has nothing to do
Okay.
That's a Superior Court decision.
It's not our, it's not our board, it's, that's the Conservation Board.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's not a planning board.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we're not disputing what you're saying.
True, okay, I'm calm. Um, the OSRD, um, I'm just going to read here. The site of the Pro's project is within the, oh, well, let me first preface this by saying, Mr. Buckley failed to mention that this is a federally designated area of environmental, extreme environmental concern, ACCE. It's also a state-designated, um, sole-source aquifer, very rare designation. It's, uh, it's in the 100-year flood plan, it's in the hazard flood plan.
But again, conservation.
Right.
That's not us.
Okay, okay. So anyways, uh, the, uh, it, it does not fit the true intention of an OSRD. An OSRD is to maintain the integrity of the natural resources. They're going into the natural resources and, and building a road, I mean, is, how, that's
To be perfectly honest with you, Mr. Hunt, there have been OSRDs in this community that have, that have nothing to do with, you know, aquifers or any kind of natural resource thing, that when we developed that bylaw 25 years ago, it was for, it was, it was, it was to create an opportunity to have smaller lot sizes and developments that, um, that could be put into place. There were two of them at the time, open space, and I forget what the other one was called, which very rarely got used. So they weren't all necessarily related to, to situations like this.
Okay. Those were comments from the, uh, the Eastern Conservation Commission. The, uh, the town did a peer review, uh, back when Forge Estates was applying, and with the BSC company. And I'll just read one of the points. If the applicant intends to submit the subdivision for acceptance as a public street, the town of Foxborough DPW shall review and accept the long-term pollution control operation and maintenance. So I don't know if the town wants to get into that, uh, I suppose that's up to
That, that is something that Mr. Gallagher requested
Okay.
on his memo.
All right. And they also, uh, also requesting here that the, uh, the subdivision has a, is serviced by a s- a street sweeper four times a year.
They don't even have that in the rest of town.
Yeah, this, because the whole
BSC did at the time of that previous?
Yes.
And what that is, is what they're doing is they're just reading the DEP stormwater standards, which tells you to clean the catch basins four times a year, and also, no town ever does it. So, you know, it's up to
We'll leave that to the Conservation Commission and the town.
And the DPW, yeah.
Yes. Is, is there any, um, stormwater discharge allowed in this area? I don't know the answer to that.
Yes. Because you have to, um, but you have to, you have to comply with the DEP stormwater standards. So that's what Weston and Sampson is reviewing now to make sure that our design complies with those standards.
So we'll hear from them shortly.
Okay, all right. And my other question is, uh, how we got to this, uh, preapproval of 12 lots at the, at the meeting, and I believe it was in 2014. A lot of confusion was around that, uh, meeting.
Is that a planning board meeting or some other meeting?
It was a planning board meeting, yes.
Were you on the planning board, Kev?
No. I was certainly, I certainly was on the planning board, but I'll be honest with you, it's 10 years ago, and so I, well, my limited recall is not, it's just, you know,
The developer
70 for crying out loud, it's a
The developer proposed a, uh, a, a plan that couldn't, wasn't practice, practicable at all. So, um, and so I don't understand how they, they were issued 12 lots.
Well, they haven't been issued anything yet, this is their application, so.
They were pre-approved for 12 lots.
Preliminary. It was a preliminary subdivision.
Yeah, preliminary, yes.
That's all they ever had, was a preliminary subdivision. Yeah, so that, that has no standing in this, right?
No.
We're starting brand new.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I guess, uh, I guess that's all I, oh, could you bring that, uh, up with the, with the road crosses my easement?
That's not the one, Tom.
No, I know, hold on.
Yeah, what's with your computer tonight?
I know, you never have issues.
I know.
Wore it out on you?
He's getting old too.
Getting old too.
Still a baby, Kev, come on.
Yeah, the developer is trying to spin this like he's doing me a big favor by giving me, uh, road frontage, but he's got his road coming into my easement that's been there for 100 years, and Kevin has spoken out about this before.
I have.
That's, that can't happen. I've got a, I've got a letter from, from the town saying that my easement cannot be interfered with.
Well, he's not extinguishing your easement, your easement still exists there.
Right, yeah, but how, I mean, the letter I have says, um, during construction, he cannot, you know, he's in easement there, how is he going to build this road in my easement without interfering with mine?
I would suggest to you that if you have a letter to that effect, you should submit it, because we don't have it.
I will.
All right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Sure, I just want to, uh, give you this, if I could, maybe I approach the bench.
Sure.
Oh, please don't give him that much power.
Yeah.
Not me.
Mrs. Blay.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll keep that with the file.
But if you could get us the copy of that letter, that'd be great.
Sure, I will.
Thanks, you can get it to Gabby and Diana.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Not a problem. Would you like to speak?
Sure.
Jim Leibel, 184 East Street. I just have a question, this map actually, this drawing answered my questions. And now I, I see where the Canoe River goes under the culvert, goes through the road, and the, and the proposed road is to the right of that.
Yep.
Now, the, um, the, the culvert that's proposed, the short section of culvert is just to allow for wildlife or whatever access. So the, the river will still exit, or still enter the existing culvert on East Street and come out the other side. There's, there's no change to the routing of the river as it enters the culvert.
From what I understand, but Mr. Buckley, yeah.
That's right.
Okay, the only thing there is, I say, okay, then I see what's going on. But there, that's a pretty steep grating and incline there. It's coming into like, it looks like it's coming in as sort of a little punchbowl, but, okay, I mean, you've
The river itself, you mean? Where the culvert, where the culvert crosses the street there?
Yeah, right where the culvert enters to go across East Street.
Right.
The, the, the grading of the embankment to support the road.
Yeah, you mean the road.
Yeah, the road embankment that's got to be built on the retaining wall. That's a, a pretty tight corner there, and okay, I mean, if it's, um, it's addressed. And I also think that, as I mentioned previously, this is so close to the river that I think that any vehicle, heavy vehicle that goes off that section of road ends up in the wetlands, ends up in Canoe River. And I would hope that there would be a, a industrial strength barrier there, steel guardrails, um, on that, on that corner section. The bottom section of the road where it's entering East Street. Yeah, I mean, steel guard, and the other quick question, there's talk of, uh, the, well, the 30-foot water easement running through, and it was mentioned that is to supply a possible future, a development coming in off of Abbey Lane?
Potentially.
Potentially, maybe. My question is, is there anything that prohibits a potential purchaser of that property who's coming in from Abbey Lane, coming in and cutting into this cul-de-sac? So now they've got a complete loop from Abbey Lane out onto East Street, is there anything?
They would need to come to this board for approval for that.
Yeah, but it's, it's a possibility.
Well, there is no actual access available.
There's no roadway access.
No, no, there isn't, but I mean, if, you know
I understand your question.
If they could say, okay, we'll demolish this house and we'll come in from Abbey Lane, now we've got a loop right through.
It's a million dollar hit. It's a million dollar hit to do that.
Okay, but it's, okay, that was my question.
Thank you, sir.
If that was, if that was left as a vacant lot, I could understand your concerns. But if there's a house on it, I think the dollar value is far too high to
Yeah.
consider that.
Okay, thank you, finally.
Thank you.
Related to that, um, sort of question
Kevin, can I just add a couple of quick things?
Yes.
The, as far as the road extension, I was under the impression that road extensions are only given under safety, uh, for safety matters. You know, another 250, 225 feet, that's all pavement that's going to create more runoff. And it's all downhill to the river from there.
So where, where are you speaking about in terms of the road extension?
They're asking
The total length?
Yeah, right. They're asking, I believe, for what, 225 more feet?
That's not, that's not abnormal, and honest, and when we consider a waiver request like that, it, we really focus on the stormwater drainage.
Right, okay.
We, yeah.
Okay. And it seems like it would also cause more issues if there was a fire up there, um, making that dead end, uh, really longer.
The, well, the fire department has to review, reviews this and gives us a thing to say, yes, this is acceptable.
They'll look at the length and they'll look at the turnaround area.
And they'll look at the width.
Hydro locations, et cetera, so.
Yeah.
I just want to read one little clip, and I'll let you guys go home.
Oh, we're not done yet.
No, we're not done after this.
We still have another one to go.
This is a, uh, this is a, a, a direct quote from the designation document from ACCE of Canoe River. Canoe River Aquifer is highly vulnerable to contamination. Any contamination to this aquifer will be irreversible and could pose a significant public hazard, health hazard, and serious financial burden to the service communities.
Again, conservation, but we'll, you know, we'll, I'm sure they'll, you can address it there.
And the, just one more thing.
Yeah.
You know, the Fox, donating seven acres sounds wonderful. But Foxborough has 2,000 acres of open space right now. Is it worth risking contaminating an, an aquifer for, that aquifer That aquifer serves 66,000 people downriver. Is seven acres, you know?
It's conservation.
Seven acres worth risking that?
Well, I would wrestle with Mr. Bodie.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Continue.
Continue, oh, gosh.
He wants to close everything tonight.
I'm tired. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Continue.
Oh, my gosh. I gotta go home.
Make a motion.
Continue the public hearing. Special permit definitive subdivision 204 East Street. Construction of a proposed 12-lot subdivision.
Take care, Tom.
Heiner LLC.
Second.
4:25 at 7:30.
4:25 at 7:30.
Got it.
All those in favor?
Aye. All right. Now, at being sometime best 8:00 PM, we've continued public hearing, definitive subdivision Ridge Road.
Frank, you earned your money tonight.
M-35, P-006, and 007. Construction of a proposed four-lot subdivision, Fed Cap Incorporated. Excuse me, ma'am.
Are you guys here for this one, too?
Yep. Frank's been very patiently waiting for his turn. Why exactly did you have to be here, Frank? There you go.
You're a tough girl. Hi, Frank. Yeah, the board is gonna have to share the plans for that?
No, no, no.
We have plans for this one, Gabby.
Buckley passed out new plans.
Don't quite know how that.
No, what, Diana's just on fire. Wait, actually, I'm allowed?
Yep. If we get any more paper here, it's gonna be a fire hazard.
So, Mr. Chairman, everybody knows where we are.
Yes, we do.
So we, we've modified the plan. We've, we've met with the town's peer reviewer. We've modified the drawings, you have a memo in front of you, I'm not gonna read it. The changes were very minor, I'd like to just kinda go over them very quickly. And actually, one of them had to do with the concern of the board at the last meeting, so down here at the entrance.
Absolutely.
We've added a double catch basin, double grate on both sides, so that will capture the runoff, everything, but it's gonna be capturing everything but .1 cubic feet per second, which is absolutely de minimis. So it'll be driving it into, and that's for a big storm. Up top here, the consultant came up with a really good comment with configuration of the pipes. So we've moved, moved that around a little bit, not, not a whole lot. Again, it's the same number of catch basins, manholes, all going into the same location. We've got no changes to this. He asked for some documentation on, you know, how did you design the riprap swales, items like that. So as far as like you're concerned, or, you know, a person looking at this design, there's really.
No, no, that's the idea.
Very minimal changes made to it, and I think.
Gary was a little confused.
You what?
I know, and I caught you.
Let me just make sure I hit all of this up.
Oh, do you want a copy of the thing?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
So if you wanted, just take a quick, yeah, give her the memo.
What's up? Yes, I did.
Oh, sorry, wasn't having a touch.
And no, you can't close it.
There was a question about seed mixtures, very, very small things. We did a face-to-face with me, the engineer, and Gabby.
Gabby, what are your thoughts?
Thumbs up.
There were, there were a lot of comments, and it was, it was my fault. Because we hadn't updated the subdivision regulations as we adopted them in July, so the reviewer was using the old subdivision regulations. So, yes, so.
Alrighty.
This is why there's little red notes in the margin here.
Yes. Yeah, I think it was 10 pages, something like that.
Oh, yeah.
What are you, are you asking to close tonight, or no?
I would love it, if you closed the hearing.
Well, you know I've been gunning.
I don't, I don't wanna come back.
She's been dying to close something tonight.
Besides my eyes.
You're relatively comfortable now, because you've got all that water coming down the road, and you'll be able to intercept almost all of it, and then it's gonna go down into that basin?
Yes. And really, really, we're only talking about 200 feet of road. It's not a huge amount of road, although it is a steep road.
It is a steep road.
It is.
When I, when I first saw it, too, I was, we were concerned about it going across.
So on the other side, the other side goes up, too. So I think the road becomes where it's going.
Yeah, so we doubled that to make sure we captured it.
And so, just so I recall about the site, the road is the high point, and it kinda slopes off from that?
Yes, right here.
Yeah, but on either side, is it?
Oh, on here?
Yeah, sloping away from the road?
No, it's, so if you look at this, this is 284, 280. This is, this is a peak right here, Jeff.
Oh, is it? Okay.
That's the peak right there, and it's pitching that way and this way.
Okay.
So that's, it's, it's right at the Heinz's driveway.
Yep.
I mean, a lot of this, you know, we're gonna come back, we have to go back to Conservation for all of these lots. You know, again, I'm just showing you what a lot could look like or what a house could look like, but we, we don't know.
Bill, I, I remembered today that we need to, we need to request a street name.
Yes.
So if the board were to close today, we could add that as a condition.
Yeah, and maybe the drainage sign off of Weston and Sampson.
Right.
The silly way?
Yeah, the silly.
No, I think, I think we ought to give this to Eddie O'Leary, and just call it O'Leary's Path.
Weinfeld way sounds good.
No, no way.
Oh, that does sound good.
No, it does not.
Are we good?
Yeah, let's get it off the table.
Okay, I make a motion to close. Hold on, now I lost my thing. The public hearing for the definitive subdivision Ridge Road, M-35, P-006, and 007. Construction of a proposed four-lot subdivision, Fed Cap Inc.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have to vote to approve? Yes. No, we closed the hearing.
No, I'm sorry, yes, we do have to vote to approve the conditions.
Okay, um.
The standard conditions.
The standard conditions, and also the condition to, yeah, adopt the revisions signed off by Weston and Sampson, and request the street name from the select board.
Okay, hold on, write this down. Okay, street name. Okay, I make a motion to approve the application with standard conditions, adopting the.
Revisions.
Revisions, I couldn't remember what I wrote. Signed the Weston and Sampson letter, and then to submit a street name to the selectmen for the street. Second?
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
We weren't sure whether you had done it or not.
I wasn't either.
She wasn't either.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, I guess.
Pumping Station Road.
No, that's been.
Yeah, well, you have to continue, you can continue that one.
Hey, hey, I don't want you closing anything else, you know?
She tried all night to close stuff. Tell her to.
Did somebody second me and say?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
You have to continue, no, do we have to continue?
No.
No, we're not opening. All right, never mind.
Yeah, we're gonna go on April 11.